I think we go there. Would everyone please rise for the social release and remain standing for a moment of silence? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands our nation, our government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Please do, if you'd like to, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to point out to the board that item U2 was an amendment that was added after the agenda was first published last week, which is a presentation from the Social Services Director. Item H5 was also added after the agenda was initially posted, just because I neglected to include it. And item J2 was added also after the agenda was posted. So they've all been there since probably last Wednesday, but they weren't there when I initially posted the agenda on Monday. I would like to ask to add an item to the agenda today. I was working on it in my office, and I managed to add new agenda items, but I forgot to go back and edit that term. So I'm asking for the board to approve appropriate appropriation on expenditure of funds to reimburse Sperryville Fire Company at their request for the $2,000 that they contributed toward that truck. So that would be item F4. Those are the four things that were marked as an amendment, different from the initial posting of the agenda. Item F4 is not even on your sheet, but the other three are.
Mr. Chairman, I want the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll say it again. Motion made in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Agenda secured. Prove the amendments.
If I could, Mr. Chair, I've got some corrections today. For the October 12th minutes, there are some corrections for names that I got wrong. On October 12th, on page two, Dave Schiff should be Dave Schiff, S-C-H-I-F-F. On page five, Scott Chamberlain should be JB Carter. On page six, Mr. Chamberlain should be Mr. Carter. On page 11, there are two references of referring comments to Mr. Frazier and Mr. Losinski that should be to Mr. Frazier and Mr. Bitter. Mr. Chamberlain is also again mentioned, and it's Mr. Carter. I was doing those from my pocket, so I couldn't tell he was talking. And on page 13, also, Mr. Chamberlain is referenced again, and it's Mr. Carter.
Mr. Carter should get a decent pay out of that.
So those are all the corrections that I received for October 12th. For October, excuse me, for November the 6th. There are two name corrections, I believe. On page 23, Tom Bellick should be Tom Pelican. And on page 21, George Summitt should be George Sonnet. Those are the only corrections I got for that meeting here. On November the 18th, special meeting, I have corrections. And then November the 18th, continued meeting, although sometimes your meetings do go late, inadvertently typed that that meeting ended at 11:45 PM and ended at 11:48. So it was quite a bit, as I typed. So those are the only corrections that I had, just four amendments.
Well, now I'm not as tired as I thought.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve all the amendments at one time.
With the corrections.
With the corrections.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Liven things up a little bit now. Governor's school. Senator's agenda.
I don't think she heard that. He said he don't laugh with him, but... Oh, all right.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak about your friends in family over at Pantherland. We've been very busy since the event's met. Of course, I saw some of you at the Wednesday Assembly, which went really well, displayed the events of that morning, which we had a bus that had tipped on its side. And, oh, thank the Lord, everything was okay, and everybody's okay. Just it brought the community together. We had some heroes that emerged from that incident and brought our community even closer together, so we can do that. On a more positive note, our Scholastic Gold Team opened its season on Monday, November 27th, with wins over Strasburg and George Mason. The Strasburg match was a blowout, with a final score of 305 to 115. The match with George Mason was close the whole time, with never a difference of more than 20 points. While Rappahannock trailed by 10 at the end of round one, the Panthers tied it up in round two at 125 apiece, which was a great start to the season, since Rappahannock has not beaten Mason since the 2009 state championship. So we're very proud of our Scholastic Gold Team. And because of their performance at the K Springs Invitational, they have already earned the team squad at a national tournament, and there's three to choose from that we'll be looking at, so we're very proud. Our award-winning theater troupe is competing today. This morning, they were at Ranocello High School in Charlottesville in the Class 1 of State Theater Competition. I keep checking my phone to see what they did, and I'm dying to know any time now, or giving them a try. The original play, The Oracle, at Delphi High School, is another original by our theater director and high school English teacher, Russell Paulette. It has to have a runtime of exactly 35 minutes when you get disqualified because of VHSL regulations and that competition, so it's very difficult to do as a whole troupe, so can't wait to see how that can handle. Last week, former NBA player Chris Heron came to the high school to speak frankly with our students about his personal battle with addiction and how quickly things can spiral a lot of people. His gripping presentations spurred much discussion among our students, several of whom came forward about experiences that they had personally witnessed with loved ones. So we want to thank the PATH Foundation very much for bringing this amazing presentation to our schools and continuing this conversation is very important. On Thursday, last Thursday, our high school volleyball team was surprised by Delegate Weber, who presented the team with a resolution that was adopted into the house honoring the success of last year's team and players who earned the RCHS volleyball state championship. That's very exciting. This week, RCPS is celebrating computer science education week with hands-on workshops for students to become introduced to computer programming and coding through the Hour of Code Experience. This experience is a worldwide effort to advance participation in computer science and demystify computer coding. Today, elementary students have the opportunity to participate in an after-school workshop in Scratch coding, where even young kids can learn to code some of their favorite games and apps like Minecraft, Flappy Bird, Star Wars, The Amazing World of Dumball, and Lightbot. Very fun. RCPS is working to incorporate computer science standards into all grade levels to build on the foundations needed in a 21st century society. I know a little bit about that. I started that as a CompSci major. Did you know that? Changed it to English, and I love Shakespeare and literature. Yeah, that look is the same look my mother gave me. I'm not going to MIT, Mom, for CompSci, I like English literature. Change. Our H-back procurement process has been completed, and we have accepted the bid from Honeywell to continue with our preventative maintenance and comprehensive services. That's a big endeavor we're looking at to hopefully keep costs down and give us an idea of what we can project into plugging into the future. And the contract begins again on December 1st, so the preventative maintenance reports will now be community-generated, so we'll get those over to you. So thank you so much for your concern with our facilities and keeping that up to date and as efficient as possible. We have decided to go with Harris radios, like Gary Jenkins, our home student, recommended to the board at a previous meeting. After extensive research and comparisons with Harris and Motorola, Harris will best fit our needs in schools. And because of the cost and the type of radios they were able to outfit us with, it looks like we will be able to use some of our security grant money to offset some of those costs, which we're very excited about. So my school board and I have, we do plan to give back whatever is remaining back to the board supervisors to put toward your radios, too, because we have some need, and that was the $43,000 you had reappropriated for just that purpose. Once we have the final cost on that, we'll be in touch. We did receive this week our new local composite index for the 2018-2020 biennium, which will now be at .76, .7672, which is up from .7390 from our last biennium. So it's gone up a little bit, which means the local effort has gone up a little. So we'll wait on our governor's budget projections to build our, you know, our governor's budget in January, and then we work from there and get hot, heavy into the budgeting process. Favorite? And finally, I'd like to take a moment to invite you and the public to a special reception for our school board vice chair, Mrs. Amy Johnson, who is retiring after nearly two decades of service to the schools. Her advocacy for the school family and continued support for students has earned her respect and love of her RCPS family, and we hope you will join us tomorrow between 4:00 and 6:00 PM at Reynolds Memorial Baptist Church in Sperryville. The invitation is open to all who wish to commit a fond farewell to Mrs. Johnson in honor of her consistent dedication to her school and her community. Lieutenant's report.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, question. Ms. Ramsey, we're going to get a report a little later this afternoon from Department of Social Services, but since you're up there now, is there, someone had mentioned to me that there wasn't a Social Services representative, or that staff person that's in the schools? Is that accurate?
We have a part-time social worker.
Part-time?
Yes.
Okay. Is that the way it's always been, or is this...
No, this is new this year. We had a visiting teacher before, but not social workers, so their responsibilities took them up differently, the different, they did educational, so a lot with special ed department and things, so not so much a social services contact, but it's a person, but now it's a part-time social worker.
Okay. So how have you found that change to be? Is that pretty seamless, or...
It has its challenges, but it's, you know, working with the resources we have, it's been helpful, definitely helpful, but there is, the need is definitely there. So we have a close relationship with our Social Services Department, very thankful for that, and there's a lot of work to be done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I also have a few questions.
Yes.
The Honeywell contract, do you know how much that was, is for?
For the remainder of this year, it came out to be $49,000 and some change, which, if we projected to go out continuing the way we're going to, we're looking to spend over $106,000 by 2015. So this is going to save us quite a bit of money to keep that going. The cost we had not been completely comprehensive before, and that's why the cost kept going up and up, and that just makes it impossible to keep a, keep your budget in the cap on that, so that's what we needed to do. And then following that is that it's a 3% increase each year, which, if the $49,000 was the entire year, which was the remainder of the year, that's why it's 49. I think it comes out to 79 and some change, then it goes up to 80, 81 over the course of the next few years, but it'll lock us in.
All right. And the Harris radios, are those fixed radios in the buses, or are they handheld, or...
They're handheld, but the way they can be outfitted is they can be put into the buses on the charter systems, can be mounted and programmed, so that's why we're able to go for that, and those are the kind that the security grant will cover. They don't cover the regular...
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there more questions, Jim? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Presentation. Mr. Alan Delmar from Hartford Center for Dinner.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time today. Should I use the microphone, or am I okay like this?
Mine helps a little. The mine helps a little.
Mine helps a little, all right. Again, good afternoon, and thanks for your time. My name is Alan Delmar, and my family owns Rappahannock Cellar, and, is there a button? How about now? Sounds great. I haven't been in a courtroom since I was 16. Again, my name is Alan Delmar. My family owns Rappahannock Cellars, and I recently launched a distillery, did a distillery located in Huntley. I'm also a volunteer organizer for the Rappahannock County Artisan Trail. I know you have a long day today, so I'll try and keep this brief. I am here to ask that the board approve $3,000 in the budget amendment for the Artisan Trail. First, I'd like to share a little bit about myself, a little bit about the trail, and finally, share why we are seeking the county's financial support. In 1996, my parents moved my family from the chaos of Silicon Valley in favor of the rural peaceful community that we have here in Rappahannock. And 20 years later, this atmosphere is still essential to our family business. Our business does not thrive on the mania of the numbers game. We'd rather serve fewer people who spend a lot more than a lot of people who spend less. We thrive when a quiet couple visits Rappahannock looking to adopt our pace of life for a weekend of peace. These are the people who value the Rappahannock County community, respect our public services, and contribute to our tax base through quality spending on the many quality goods and services that are to be offered here. We need to attract that kind of visitor to our county, the individuals, rather than the hordes of tour buses, which is why my family believes in the Rappahannock County Artisan Trail. So what is the trail and how does it help the county? The trail promotes the county to tourists who value our environment, enjoy our amenities, and contribute to our tax base without increasing pressure on county services. The trail is a coalition of artisans, artists, agricultural businesses, galleries, shops, inns, B&amp;Bs, and restaurants. These are our neighbors. They have incredible talents as foreign artisans. They're mastering their tradecraft, and they're just trying to make a living sharing it. It is exactly these small business owners with their products and services which encourage visitors to come and stay for the weekend. You can't blow through an art gallery, or an antique emporium, or a pottery studio, nor would you want to. You need to slow down, have a conversation, stay a while, and hopefully spend a little, a lot, of money. This is the kind of tourism which the trail is dedicated to attracting. Further, the trail promotes members, its members, to residents who also enjoy visiting studios, taking classes, and purchasing local art. All of this is helping to keep Rappahannock spending, stay in Rappahannock County. So how does the trail accomplish this? To begin with, the Rappahannock County Artisan Trail is one of 18 in the state, which is supported by the nonprofit Artisan Center of Virginia. Each individual trail is a grassroots organization run by resident volunteers for the benefit of our residents and our counties. The trail markets the county's members and products, both individually and collectively, to drive business to the local economy. Now, the $3,000 that we're requesting, combined with our annual member dues, will go towards work conducted by the Artisan Center of Virginia to provide us with the material support we need to succeed. This money will help fund trail projects, particularly digital and print services. Digital assets include such things as our county trail website, which has individual member pages, interactive maps, and event calendars for trip planning, social media promotion, and promotion on Virginia's for lovers website. Now, the print assets include both the design and printing of maps and brochures, flatings, and banners. Simply put, this funding, along with our volunteer work, will help draw the right kind of tourists to our county and generate important tax revenue for our residents, our families, without detracting from what it is that we're trying to share with, to be charged, and that is our peaceful rural community. The trail is a large asset working on a small investment. We would like to have your endorsement to help us continue building the trail, preserving Rappahannock both as a fabulous place to live and an amazing destination to visit. Thank you for your time.
Got a question. You mentioned that this would be combined with your annual member dues. Do you have any idea how much your dues are?
We, I believe right now, our dues are about $4,000 combined, and that, it's unclear to me if it's all $4,000 is entirely dues, or if it's also from the support of advertising on the maps and such by local businesses.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item in the presentation from Social Services Director, agenda four.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me okay? I'll need the microphone as well. Mousy voice, sorry. I'm going to be a part of the new director of Rappahannock Social Services. Good to see everyone. Lots have changed with Rappahannock Social Services. We've had a lot of turnover. As most of you know, we had a director very briefly for about eight months, and she left, and I took her with reins. We've had quite a bit of staff turnover as well, but I'm hoping we're stable and ready to move forward with lots of exciting things changing. Our numbers are down. Our foster care caseload is very light right now, so we're hoping that our prevention services are really taking off and taking hold and working well with our families and children right now. We currently have 14 children in foster care. We have two children in our foster and futures program we have, and one child in our independent living program. So prevention services, like I said, are working really well to keep the kids out of foster care. We are still recruiting very hard to get foster homes in Rappahannock County. Right now, we have one home still in the county. We have two homes outside of the county, and we just approved one home in Castleton. So we have two fully approved homes in the county, but one is only taking respite emergency children only, in the words of a child concerned in the middle of the night and needs somewhere to stay just briefly until we can place permanently. We have two kinship families that are outside of the county that are transitioning into full foster home approvals, so we're hoping to move away from using residential and group home placements in more of a family setting. So that's where we are with our foster home situation. Comprehensive services are, is working really well. Our spending is way down since we streamlined looking at how we were providing services and spending more time with our service providers and with our families in the family assessment process. Our budgets are down, our services are down, and currently, we are providing services to 26 children in the county, and that incorporates the foster care, special education, and the court services children. Questions?
Could you give us an idea of the 26 children that are in the system now? Could you give us an idea what the annual cost of that properly would be?
For comprehensive services? Our yearly expenditures as of November 30th was $400,203.
And that's for 26, that's for 26 children?
That's what we're currently serving. So that, that's as of November 30th, so that number, of course, as you know, is perish, fluctuates all the time. CSA is a constant moving target, depending on what's going on with special education and foster care and prevention services. We are way below mid-year where we were in 2015. We're almost half of what we were in 15, and substantially below where we were in 16 at mid-year.
Thank you.
Jim, I'm sorry, I have a question or two. And I know later in the agenda, maybe this isn't entirely fair, we've got a document or, I don't think it's a presentation, but it's just the...
The financial?
Yeah, Commonwealth's annual financial statements, I guess, for 2017. I was trying, and, you know, I know you don't have that in front of you necessarily, but it looks like things are broken up between what you get in the way of reimbursements or revenues.
Yes.
A base budget, and then you get pass-throughs. What are the, what are pass-throughs?
Pass-through is money that we request throughout the year, and it's on different funding levels. For example, CSA is basically a 48% state and federal match and a 42% local match, whereas for E, Title IV, funding assistance for like children in foster care and adoption assistance, that's 100% reimbursement. And then, of course, we have our public assistance module, and then we have administrative, which is a different module that has different match rates.
So it kind of looks like, based on this, it's almost a 50/50 split between the base budget and your pass-throughs then?
For comprehensive services? It is right at 50/50 for comprehensive services. It's 42/48.
Okay. And then, there's a payout, call it, I guess, benefit payments to clients?
Benefit programs?
Well, it says payments here, but this is the foster care and the adoption assistance. Those are, and then there's the client services purchased by you all.
Okay.
Yeah, and I guess that's what my question is, is what, where are the, and it's not very much money. It's only like $23,000 or $24,000 of client services purchased by you all. Are those things that are just not covered by the state or by the feds, or...
Purchased services include our programs like auxiliary grant. Those are our adult services for the seniors. They also can include the state and staple money, which is a state grant that we received, and I think our grant last year was right there, $18,000. And so that has a small local match to it. And we use that money to support services during child protective service cases, if a family needs assistance with utilities or medical care as a preventative supportive measure to keep children out of the foster care system.
Right, right. So, again, I'm just trying to parse this here, so it looked like there was about $23,000 or $24,000 in the local Department of Social Services client services, like what you said. I mean, is that a number that you think needs to go up at some point to provide more adult protective services or family services, like you said, utilities or rental assistance?
It may change. One of the things that we are currently working on, and I'll be getting with my local board this week, is we are looking at approving an adult foster home in Rappahannock County, so that would be the first time that we've ever had one of those. So we may need to look at increasing adult service money to help fund that for seniors that may not have a place to go and sort of we can get them into a more permanent situation, sort of like a respite home for our foster care children.
So my last question, and I don't know if you've done this yet, because you haven't probably started building your budget, but given that you, you know, the needs seem to have, go in half and then half again, I mean, are you seeing kind of the same amount? It seems like this is the one line item where we have to go back in halfway through the year and put more money toward it.
We, we are not going to need to do this year. I thought we are looking really, really good. We looked at budget this week. As we are starting to gear up for budget season, I do not foresee us needing requests at mid-year. Our budget is in really good shape. And our benefits... And our benefits, public assistance programs, our SNAP Medicaid TANF programs, our case counts are down. Currently, we're servicing about 432 medical assistance cases. We have 162 SNAP or better known as food stamp cases, and we have two TANF cases or financial assistance cases. We're serving six people on the child care subsidy caseload right now.
So, are you worried about what's happening at the federal or the state level here roaming the world?
Not, not right now. I don't, we're not feeling the effects of anything that's going on at the White House coming down. I think we're safe right now as far as cuts at the federal level. That may come next year as far as our programs. At least, that's what we're hearing, that we're safe right now.
Yeah, and I know it can change.
And we have a new governor coming, so everything's up for change right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
We're meeting in, might I say, right, 1:30?
Yes.
Hi, Mrs. Bevina, is she here?
She is not going to be here today because people are banking the taxes. So, you have the cash balance expenditure by department and summary expenditure reports in the packet.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question on the treasurer's report here, and I'm pretty thick on this subject. I keep looking at this every month, and I keep coming up with the same question. It just seems like, you know, we're such in a better cash position. Bank, our bank balances are almost three and a half million above what they were at this time last year, and our expenses are actually under so far. You know, we're 41% through the year and spent 37% of our money. And I guess, and this is just a question for the treasurer, I'm wondering if this, and I understand that there's a lot of bills out there that need to be paid, and a lot of this is going to get drained down in time, but I'm wondering if we're starting to see a, you know, the beginnings of a rainy day fund or something along those lines with how well we're doing with our cash balance? Or, back to my original comment, maybe I'm completely, completely misreading this, but you know, I know we got a very good letter from the state last month about our fiscal management, and then I see the treasurer's report, it's always looked very positive. And I just, for the purposes of going into the next budget season, just wonder if we don't have something here that might be able to be utilized as a contingency fund or at least a portion of it. But I'm sure there's a, there's an explanation out there, so maybe I'll just ask it. Ms. Nick is always great about getting back to this when we have a question, so maybe that's just my question for you today.
And some of the expenditures go out fairly evenly, month to month to month, and then some of them, you expend a whole hunk of money at the beginning of the year accordingly. So, you almost have to drill in into the detail to really look at those percentages because they're kind of all over the map. If you, I'm just looking at page one, and they go from 100% down to, you know, 3% or 4%. So, it just depends.
Right, and, you know, my oversimplification of that was to look at the summary expense report, you know, where we're used 36.1, 36.17% of our budgeted monies, 41% through the year. So, yeah, I know the devil's in the details on that. I just see it every month. It looks like that amount grows every month, and I just wonder what that means, you know, as we sort of get into the beginning of the next budget season.
You have two different sets of accounts payable in the packet. One was the bills which were paid in that cycle on the number of 15th, for a total of $10,806.84, which are those utilities and so forth that you approved, you paid in the middle of the month. And then, the December 4th total invoices list is $418,627.39. So, you need to approve both those sets of invoices.
If we could kind of, in the same vein as Mr. Zensky's earlier comments on our refuse disposal collection, have we ever had a chance to meet with a fact about the holling of the, they were supposed to have an increase in the fees? I just wonder if you had a chance to meet?
I think they have increased fees, and we're working on getting posted an increase on our fees.
Because they, they said that if we changed the method of what we were doing, instead of hauling it to the cop or transfer, if we haul it to their transfer, they would do it for the same fee, but it's never been a discussion by this board. I'm just wondering how we might have that discussion.
I can put it on those.
Back in July, I thought we were going to be doing it. Kind of got, kind of slipped in my mind, but I thought that we would be doing that.
I think there was also a discussion back in the day as to whether there was another vendor other than Uptec just for competitive purposes or looking to see what somebody else would charge, but...
We would have it with the January discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion that we pay the bills, both sets, the accounts payable on November 15th and those on December 4th.
All right, second? About second. Motion made, second. Pay the accounts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Franklin, basis for migration to the new email provider?
This is just a quick update. When I reported this to you last week, we were working on that migration, and because our IT consultant went through every single email address that we had and eliminated some email addresses that we don't even know why they were there, and got rid of some excess email addresses, we were able to get the cost down to under $5,000. So, that's a contract that I could approve and then sign. And then, item F4 was added.
Well, I just want to mention something to you about the new email address. Someone has just stolen my email password, and I can go back in and delete, I guess, if they all my email, create a new password. So, be on the lookout because what I've done, it looked like it, I had consulting fees or something. We have a baby.
Yeah, what he's saying is we, we actually received an email that looked like it was from his email address directing us to pay a consulting fee to somebody, and it was a scam. So, if you see anything like that, let us know immediately.
Let's all remember, just to G, public comment?
This is the item that was added. Sperry Bill, volunteer fire department contributed $2,000 toward purchasing one of those cargo trucks, and they have asked for their money back. So, this is a request for supplemental appropriation so that we can reimburse them that $2,000 and for permission to expend it in the middle of December so I can go ahead and pay them rather than wait till January the 3rd. And I have sent information to General Services in Richmond and waiting for a response back about what we need to do to finalize all that stuff to guard those vehicles and that snowplow so that we can give it to Castleton as requested. I'm hoping to get a answer on that this week.
The $5,300 truck is sitting up there. We can't do anything with it for at least another year.
That's what I want you to tell me.
The $2,000 truck, all, most of those trucks, I think, were part of the state police investigation, and maybe a bit premature because of, of the end of this, not by now, it's good.
And they're asking for their money back because they don't have a truck, so that's why this is...
Have they got proof that they paid anything for it?
We have a copy of a check that they paid to use, directed to the credit card, which came from the treasurer.
But again, all that process was part of the investigation, I believe, so I don't know.
I don't know, I'm not a, I'm not a trained investigator, but the $2,000 that they contributed toward the truck, they just asked us to give it back to them so that would make it our $2,000 contribution instead of theirs. So, I don't know if that changes anything about the investigation.
The truck that's got the license on it, is the $2,000 truck, modified, I think, 60,000, that's another truck.
I could bring that file with me.
Unless they put it on the wrong truck, apparently they did.
It's on the wrong truck. That's what I'm trying to pull together, all that documentation.
That's what happened in the $5,300 truck, it's had to go back to risk when we lose the money.
That may be.
Nobody's taken on top of that.
Yes.
Of course, nobody's, nobody's responsible for it except the taxpayer.
Mr. Frasier, if he wants to know who takes responsibility for it, I'll take responsibility for it since July 5th. But it just happened in June.
The tag could be on there in June.
It happened in June 2016.
The tag got put on a truck in June after I encouraged the administration staff to make sure that it happened so we wouldn't have to just give the truck back. And now, if that tag is put on the wrong truck, then we have to give one truck back, and the taxpayer now has $5,300.
I have sent all the documents, our copies of the, you know, for the purchases, our copies of the registration, our copies of the titles and everything to Richmond, and told them what we need to know and what we are trying to find out, and explained to them that they were sort of locked up in this investigation that was going on, and could they please advise me as to how to proceed? So, the guy that needed to tell me that was on vacation last week, so I'm hoping to talk to him this week. I did not have a chance to call today.
And I think to tell them all that, then we should just hold on to this.
I'll disagree with that. You know, in good faith, the Sperryville Fire wrote a check to the county to pay for the purchase of the truck.
It may happen that it's an identity item, so I'm opposed to it until we find out the rest of this information, sorry.
Well, I think it's slight on the volunteer fire department that we hold up their money.
Until we know what's going on, gentlemen, I don't think we should do anything. And the reason that we're at this point is because we haven't done anything. Well, I do know that Ms. Gardner's been working on it on a daily basis, because I've been checking in. If the... I think until it's cleared up and we know exactly what we're doing, and that's when we add. Hopefully, we'll know more tomorrow, because that's when they're, like she said, the guy was on vacation and couldn't get back to her last... It's been a year and a half, it's one month, man. Well, I guess we have no choice.
Well, I think, but I do, I do think Mrs. Bennet has a point in that the fire and rescue company is suffering for our alleged incompetence around this issue, and should they suffer to the tune of $2,000, which to a company is probably a lot of money. You know, I'm not opposed to having that go for another 30 days, but since the state, what did they give us the $2,000? Was it in 2016? Has it been going on 18 months?
I'm not sure what the date of the check is. I'm pretty sure it was 2016. They didn't give us the check, they actually made a payment toward the visa charge bill.
Oh, that was improper at the time, and this girl knew it and did nothing. Now, you want to just, just make a move right now, just do something, we finally, finally act like we want to pay attention to something, and now you want to do something, and it's just, it's the wrong way to do public business.
No, my only point was it's unfortunate that Sperryville Fire has to suffer the consequences of this.
I recall, except for the fact that we did nothing for a year and a half, because now I thought that they got caught up in the improper purchasing. They could have bought the truck themselves. It was open to fire and rescue companies to go down there and purchase equipment. They did not have to go the route that they went. And I think, I think it's incumbent on this board to make sure that we've got everything covered before we finally decide to do something.
Well, I'll ask a question I'm not sure can be answered, but do we have, does this board have any idea when this investigation is going to get put to bed? We've been out here twisting in the wind on this thing for a long time, and it's tying things up such as this. I know nobody here at this table has the answer, but I'm not sure we're allowed to have an update. I really am not sure, but I mean, that seems to be, we seem to be coming back to this investigation on a regular basis without any knowledge of, you know, if there's ever going to be any end to it.
Well, we can, in the meantime, go ahead and register the truck that's not registered, put it in service so that we can disperse it. I don't think we can. We're supposed to do that within 12 months of the purchase. If there's still 12 months, we can do that. No, that was June of 2016. So, we have to, we have to tag it by June in 2017, and we apparently tagged the wrong truck from what we just discussed here. If we tagged the wrong truck, then we tagged the truck that Sperryville claims is theirs, and we'll probably have to give the $5,300 truck back at a $5,300 loss to the taxpayer.
Well, that's a little bit speculation until we hear back from Richmond.
That's what she just said. I didn't speculate, and it was just the administration.
She asked for information from the person in Richmond to tell us how we can go forward.
Gentlemen, I already did that for y'all a year ago. I did.
Did you take action?
How can I take action?
Could you not take action?
I encouraged our staff to do something, and they went and bought a tag. If they bought the tag for the wrong truck, what am I supposed to do? Follow people around the DMV?
Well, if you need to, maybe.
Sounds like you...
At the salary level that we're supposed to pay people, I've got to follow them around to DMV?
I don't, I don't have an answer for the investigation. I don't have an answer for, from General Services yet. All I'm doing is presenting to you the request that came from the fire company to reimburse their money. And if the board is not of a mind to do that today, then I will put that on the January agenda, at which time, maybe we will have some more information from General Services.
I think that's what we have to do. I would actually like to ask the county attorney if, being this, this investigation is not finalized, that inhibit us from moving ahead with licensing trucks or dealing with the problem at hand, does it?
I can see no reason why you can't proceed to license the truck and put it into service as was originally contemplated. The existence of the investigation, I don't think in any way affects the disposition of the property, the army trucks.
Mr. Frasier points out that the time is of the essence.
The facts are the facts. They've been gathered by the state police.
So, in the meantime, I guess we move on to the next item, because we're not going to get anywhere with this one today.
Well, I do think we should get a report on this in January, and hopefully, the county administrator's going to have something from the General Services Administration, wherever you call them, down at Richmond, so I think that's what we're doing, is hoping that we'll have something, some more information in the next thirty minutes.
That is any point in registering the other truck. If we have to return it, that's just another bit of good money after bad.
Maybe we missed a bit, but I, gentlemen, I asked y'all back, back at that time period, if two members of this board would form a delegation and go down there and sit down, and I got no encouragement, no second, nothing, no, it was crickets. We could have had all this information a year ago. Ignoring problems don't make me real way to this company.
Next item, Mr. Public comment? Means any more wishing or caring to speak or have the opportunity to do so, just raise your hand to be recognized and want to...
your hand to be recognized and once recognized, say your name, and you just accept your promise. You can comment on any subject, just direct your comments to the board. Clear public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Phil Urban. Phil. Before, very shortly after your next meeting in January, the General Assembly will be meeting in Richmond. And it seems to me that every time, or most often, when the General Assembly is meeting, there's some legislation that's introduced that is in the best interest of the urban community and against the best interests of our rural county. We'll be under a period of transition in January and I hope that despite that, that the best interest of Rappahannock County can't be represented by somebody in our local government tasked with the opportunity of watching for legislation that is against the best interests of Rappahannock. Nothing is safe when the General Assembly is in session and I'd like to ensure that our government is well represented and the legislation is being considered.
I'm Jack Addison, Jackson District. I'm president of the Rappahannock Fire Rescue Association. I'm here today requesting that the addendum were changed to section one seventy-one ninety-four of the county code where it was, PM, any information rectified by a public agency, all aid, fire and rescue companies. So the fire companies can put up a twenty-first century sign where we can post amber alerts, code red alerts, weather alerts, and any activities of fundraising for volunteer companies. I'm asking that this be done very quickly so that we can take care of business at the local level. Want to thank you.
Jack, what kind of sign are you envisioning?
Electronic sign where you can program it by computer and you can put, say, it's an amber alert.
Right, so it's similar to the one, for example, that's in front of the high school?
We're not planning on, just having a message where it would stay there and then probably another message would flash. Say we've got an amber alert, we can flash that, we've got a weather alert that can be flashed. And say you put the column or in dimensions of stuff, it would be an asset that would stay. It's the old electronic where you can do it by computer.
Yeah. Well, now, if it's fixed, where you are, free to do whatever you want, what about the size of the sign?
Well, it needs to be where you can see it, say, no more than a hundred square feet, say eight by ten or something, that's eighty square feet. I would say a hundred square feet would cover everybody.
Single sided.
What?
That would be the single side.
Right. Be double sided.
Because you're going to be able to read it from both sides, right?
Right.
Coming and going down the highway. You don't want four by four because it's double sided. See what I'm saying? You want that square inch or square foot.
Right, it should be double sided signs that maybe that'd be two hundred square feet on a ten, both sides.
But we're just, we're in single sided.
Single, say eight by ten or something, at least eight by ten.
It's eight by ten, it's eight by ten.
Be double sided.
Eight feet tall and ten foot wide, yeah. That's what I was wondering. What's the one you have there now? That's eight foot, uh...
That's probably close, eight by ten.
That's in poor condition. It's in poor condition.
It's not working.
That's poor condition. That's poor condition. I got trucks out there.
Anyone else?
Rick Kohler, Jackson District. I support the fire department and I'm always happy to have the fire department be able to respond and do things. I do have a little bit of a concern about exempting anybody from the ordinances. Just be, I think if you were going to consider anything, it would be, the fire department could maybe do what it wants to do under a certain guideline, it wouldn't just create a full exemption. I think that would be opening the door to other exemptions throughout the county for other organizations. It would concern me that we might have a, at some point in the future, have a song like you drive down to Fredericksburg and there's big billboards flashing pictures on them, you know, Ed Chevrolet and then after, you know, insurance and something else. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to see that. I know that's not the intention, I'm not saying it is the intention, I'd just be a little nervous about some organization of any kind exempt from any ordinance that we have, that the county has in effect. That's all.
Hello. Happy holidays. I'm here in my role as, once again, as co-chair of the Rappahannock benevolent fund dinner and I want to extend an invitation to all of you supervisors, Jane Whitfield of the Jackson District. And once again, I'm co-chairing the Rappahannock benevolent fund dinner with Lindsay Sonnet and I want to invite all of you to attend and support this important organization. We'd like to have all of you in attendance. Thank you to Mr. Lysinski for being a celebrity waiter once again this year. The dinner is on January twenty-seventh. The theme this year is meet me at the farmer's market. And last year, we raised over sixty thousand dollars to provide emergency assistance to the Winkin people here in Rappahannock County when they need it. And all of your attendance would be most welcome. If you'd like to be a celebrity waiter, let me know. If you'd just like to attend and show your support, just give me an email and let me know. We'd love to have you.
Got a big enough amount. Good afternoon, Dean Deacon's Hampton District. Four items, a little bit divergent, but I haven't said anything in a couple of months and a couple of things have been bothering me. Number one, I'm in agreement with the planning commission recommendations about not changing or not making the zoning amendments. I am in favor of hiring Mr. Luke as an interim attorney to assist the transition team. I think he's absolutely a valuable asset to our county. Letter to the editor last week was talking about our increase in salaries and our increase of staff and I'm concerned about that. I'm hoping about four and a half years, I'll hit my fifty-year mark as a self-employed guy and I want to retire. And it'll be on fixed income and I don't want to be taxed out of this county essentially. This is my last spot. Been here for thirty-four years and hope to be buried here. Maybe next time I'll show you my first tax bill, which was eighteen dollars. I'd sure like to have that back. Quite a different change than like in two thousand seventeen. It's a little concerning that we have a seventy-two-hundred-person population in this county and the staff that we, that we're funding now is equal to much larger communities. I agree with the letter to the editor about the negotiating skills of our current administrator, our new administrator. He's got quite a golden parachute that we're going to pay for. Third issue is dark sky initiative and I've brought this up on several occasions about how this county is shaping up, like I use the example of Long Drive in LA. And I would like to hold accounting to what was dictated to me by Mr. McCarthy's predecessor, about the majority of your property could not exceed fifteen percent of the flood. Though these are down now and if you look around the county and you look at these black sacred mountains and all you see is light and we're concerned about being a dark sky county. Ketchum Idaho, I believe, is applying for the first or the second only dark sky preserve in the world. The other one is in someplace in Africa and they've written it down very specifically as to how they're going to proceed. And Ketchum Idaho is a pretty gorgeous place, not like Rappahannock, but it's still pretty gorgeous. But if you continue to let these folks build and show off their wealth on top of these mountains, you're going to see something that looks very much like Los Angeles. And I can't think of the author's name, but there's a great book, it was published by the Waterfront Foundation, that I bought years ago, it's called Bingo Night at the Fire Hall. And it was about this woman watching what was happening to western Mountain County. And there's no comparison between the beauty of western Mountain County and our wonderful Rappahannock. But that book was written several years ago and if you go back to those same hills, if she saw the encroaching light and look at it now, that's what's going to happen here if we don't slow it down a bit. The fourth thing is a personal issue. On the sixteenth of January, I was sitting back after doing some brushing and I thought there was a psychotic killer on my chair. If you know what a psychotic killer is, it's large, black and yellow bee, makes a pretty good sound, usually pretty harmless to humans, but it's held on psychotics. So I got up and looked around, couldn't find a psychotic killer. I sat down again and a drone flew down the Thornton River from west to east, lost track of it, didn't think much about it. It came back, it's the first time I've seen a drone, came back going east to west and it hovered sort of at a bleak angle to my house for about ten minutes. And I'm here to make a public statement that I had a conversation with Mr. Richardson, Mr. Winchester, Mr. Brown, and if it happens again, that person will be missing part of this fleet. Thank you.
Yeah, Merry Christmas. Hope you're...
Yes.
Page twenty, Jackson District. With your indulgence, I'm going to try something a little different today. As you know, or you're aware, I, and as Dean referred to, I've been investigating staffing in the county and payroll, all right? So I'm going to try a little graphic representation of what I think has been going on. So starting over here, sometime when John McCarthy was here, we had a workload curve that looked like that, relatively flat because we're not growing very much, all right? And then, you know, there's a few little regulations that have to happen. Now, under John McCarthy, our productivity was going about like that. So this is workload and this is how much we're producing. Then, right about here, John retired. Because we didn't have, give Debbie a deputy, immediately production went down and John, I mean, and Debbie wasn't John, so the rate kind of went something like that. I don't know. There's no number, so I can't, these are just illustrations, all right? Then citizens, your employers, got involved and started making comments and pointing out issues. Well, because of the defensive nature, productivity started going down a little bit more, all right? Then, because the citizens were kind of disgruntled, they weren't getting answers, FOIA happened, all right? And now the workload curve bends up a little bit, it's going like this. All right? Going off my tray here. Anyway, then somewhere after this point, workforce relations sour, all right? And so overall, the workforce product, productivity declined again, all right? An example would be the issue that went on with Deborah Nipkin, who did what, all right? Then we hired Brenda. Finally, we start getting it up, tick in that curve, all right? Because she's up here about at that productivity and she got other people going. Well, the problem is all this workload that got deferred or became a backlog, all right, started piling up out here, all right? Because it still has to get done, you still have to do a comprehensive plan, you still have to do strategic fire plan, you still have to do long-range financial thing, all these things, you can figure out infrastructure, you've got task force. As John, as you said the other day at the Public Safety Committee, here we are six months later, same action items, not much progress, all right? So what you have is now we're coming up here to cover this great big backlog, all this, and I ran out of chart. This area needs to be the same as that area, all right? So that is a monstrously steep curve to fill that. And the way we're, and this is now the starting of our hiring spree, all right? So what the employees, and when I listen to discussions about hiring people, it's always, I can't get the work done, all right? So what that is, is the employees are looking at this like that and say, you're right, I can't, look at all that, I see this tsunami coming at me, how can I get that done, all right? And they're complaining, all right? Well, the issue is, as our elected representatives, you need to take the long-range picture. What happens, what happens when they finish that workload right out here? And we've hired at this level, all right? What are these people going to do? And we're going to be overstaffed. What I'm saying is you need to find a slightly, you need to be a little bit more careful coming up this curve so that hopefully you find a way to get this done, such as volunteers for the planning commission, volunteers for the fire strategic plan, whatever, so you can turn this so it goes that way with your actual permanent hires. And I hope you take that to heart and if you like that or want a hard copy of it, and I also bother to provide you a pretty version of the chart and because I don't think you have one, because you don't, I'm not aware of any workload management system, all right? There's a to-do list of some of the big things that I think are in that workload hole. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Want to put it away, sir?
Ron Mackel, Jackson District. First, I wanted to speak to the change in the sign ordinance. I don't think this is a good idea. I think that we have, we have one, actually, it's almost old-school electronic sign out there right now at the high school. And newer ones are more video screening and you can just do all sorts of cool stuff with them, but it's not anything that we need here in Rappahannock County. And the other thing is that by, now, Amy Schloss said that, you know, this is something they'd like to do, but you've got six other organizations, six other organizations that would have the potential to do this also. And, I mean, we just don't need that type, that's not the kind of sign that we want to hear. And I'm not sure that the information that they... And I'm not sure that the information that they would be putting out would really be all that beneficial compared to, you know, the method that they have to use. So I would, I would encourage you to not make this change. I think, I think they, you know, they have signs now, yes, they're, they're old-school, but they can be rehabbed and still utilized to the extent that they have for the last twenty, thirty years or whatever. And I think that's, that's sufficient on that subject. Now, the other subject I want to ask you about, or whatever, is that Mr. Glanny has, has put out a lot of facts and figures in the paper last week. And we haven't heard anything from you as to whether these are fact, you know, whether they're, they're actual facts, or are they accurate. I think it's important at this point in time that you all, sooner rather than later, make some kind of statement that verifies whether this information is in fact correct, because if it's not, we need, you know, we need to know, because right now, it's the only information we have to make a decision on or to make a judgment on. So I would encourage you to make every effort to produce an error of. Thank you.
Mike Mahoney from Pembroke District. Two very quick comments. Not too long ago, I spent some time in Times Square. My hotel room was on the thirty-ninth floor. I can assure you that there is no limit to the size that electronic sign makers can now make. I looked out my thirty-ninth room floor directly at an electronic sign. Ten by ten would be peanuts to those sign makers. So if you put something into the ordinance, please do put a limit on the sign. Second comment is very quick. Mr. Glanny several times referred to "these citizens," and I'd like to ask him if perhaps it's changed those words to "some citizens." Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak? Anyone else here to speak? Clear public comment, close. Anybody want to comment?
Well, with help, say something. In response to clearing up some figures of the Quicksand article that Mr. Glanny put out, he cited King Queen County, that county administrator makes, I think, two-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand dollars. He compared this new highry to Mr. McCarthy's salary, and I think we hired this guy at one-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand, and Mr. McCarthy was at one-seventy or one-seventy-five when he left, so it's not, it's not equal. I know that, that Mr. McCarthy was also a zoning administrator, so that does make a difference. So, yeah, we basically got back into almost an emergency situation where nothing was happening, and this, this chart is, I mean, it is possible that, quite possible, once we get caught up with this work, that we will be overstaffed. We got to deal with that, that time. But in the meantime, things are really going through the cracks, and, and, you know, thanks to Ms. Garden that's here, but unfortunately, just temporarily, we're making headway on that. So, yeah, we're only seventy-three-hundred people here, but we do have fixed costs, just like every other, just like the school. You know, we don't have that many students, but we still need teachers for every grade and need staff. So that's just the price we pay for small population, which we enjoy in terms of quiet and, and, you know, peaceful atmosphere. I was really encouraged to hear that John Parker had to say that our numbers are down. That's going to save a horrendous amount of money, you know, so you just don't know. But we have kept the tax rate down for four years in a row, the same, and, you know, and, you know, it's not impossible that we can continue to do that despite these new highries in our county administration. That does not represent, even though it sounds, you know, you take a thirty thousand here and fifty thousand there, it sounds like a lot of money, but what you're really dealing with is the percentage of our total budget is what we have to pay attention to. So that's my little feedback.
Well, I guess what I'm reminded of is that good government is expensive, but bad government is a lot more expensive. We have tried to do this on the cheap. I think that's a big part of what the dialogue has been over the last year. We saddled the county administrator with zoning responsibilities, and yes, the productivity went down, but she had a couple of staff members that quit on her, and that affected productivity as well. So it's not as simple as just looking at a line and saying, okay, our productivity went down, there were reasons for that. And we found out that we were asking too few people to do too many things, which was bad government. Now, do you spend your way out of that? Well, that's probably not a great idea, but we certainly have found out that we can't do it entirely on the cheap. We're going to be, well, we took a look at another decision last year, where we had a very, very attractive arrangement in hiring a new county attorney, when our Commonwealth attorney stepped forward and said, I will do this for, I think the number was, one-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars a year, when in fact, if we were to go out and hire a new county attorney, pay he or she all the benefits, probably wouldn't be competitive unless you were in the neighborhood of one-hundred-and-twenty-five to one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. This board decided to take the cost-effective way, and it's worked well for us, but it's back on the agenda. And I think, I guess we're going to be talking about it again because of a workload issue, I assume. So here we are again, you know, having to make, having to make that decision. So the proposal, I guess, in the chart here, and we've heard it over and over again, is let's improve our productivity by bringing on volunteers and having them help us out. And we've listened. We've had volunteers involved in the Building Task Force, Broadband Committee, Talent Task Force. We've relied on a lot of skillful people to come in and supplement our talents. There are some things we've rejected, like the Finance Committee. But the truth of the matter is, and it's my personal opinion, that there are some things that we as a, as a government, that have to provide for education and public safety, and being good stewards of the money, there needs to be accountability. And there is no accountability with the volunteer staff. So they resign at any time, they're not, they're not subject to any performance evaluations, although I know there's an argument that we don't do performance evaluations already.
Yeah.
But you can't do it with volunteers. You can certainly do it with your employees if you've decided to institute that. So I just don't think that we're going to get there by doing this through volunteerism and as talented as many people in this community are. So I'm not saying we have to spend our way out of it, but if you look at the talents of somebody like Mr. Curry, that this board vetted in numerous meetings and through the interview process, ladies and gentlemen, there's a reason this county only got fifteen applications to be the county administrator in Rappahannock. They watch YouTube, they read the newspaper, they see what certain citizens feel about their government, and whether they choose, whether they make a decision it's a toxic environment, or whatever decision they make, or whether we're not going to pay them enough, we didn't get, we don't have that many applications here. This is not Fairfax County, this is not Loudoun County. And I think, given the fact that we were able to get a man of that caliber to come here, oh, and by the way, thanks to the Enron County Administrator, we didn't have to pay a search firm thirty thousand dollars to go and find that individual, which is what a search firm costs to do something like that. And so your county government, your, your board supervisors, through the good expertise of the Enron County Administrator, was able to find what we think is a very capable individual to come into this county without spending thirty thousand dollars to do it, and bring a myriad of expertise along, along the way. Now we got some, now we got something in the paper before the individual even steps on the county soil, putting his whole, putting his whole hiring process and the individual himself into question. And you have the audacity to ask, well, why doesn't anybody come here? Why doesn't, you know, why can't we get through people, and why does our productivity go down? You know, I, I think, I think the answer lies among us, frankly. So in summary, I think we do a pretty decent job, this board does, with, and this county staff that is under constant scrutiny with the assets that it has, and with the tools that it's got, and the fact that the taxes in this county have not been raised in the last four years, and that we've gotten a letter from Richmond saying that we are not in any kind of fiscal jeopardy in any way, shape, or form, like the bottom fifteen percent of counties in this Commonwealth. The ship is not going to the bottom of the sea. We are not in Quicksand. We are, we are doing well with the assets that we have, the people that we have, and the people that are coming on board. And I'm proud of it, regardless of what some people believe in this county. And I, I side with Mr. Mahoney in that I think the majority of the people in this county think that the people that work very hard for it, and public servants and the volunteers do a pretty damn fine job.
Well, I might take a few issues with some of what y'all said here. First off, we had five candidates for the county attorney job, and one of them was a contractor that Orange and Palatine counties uses, and he quoted between sixty and seventy-thousand a year. With just one individual, we're at sixty, and it looks like we're talking about going to ninety-plus in today's meeting. But, so, we're not saving any money.
Well, that's a question, Mr. Fraser, because I know you have a floor. I, I, you and I agreed on, on that model, that we thought a sheer county attorney had benefit, model had benefits to this county, but that individual would only be in Rappahannock for two days, maybe three days a week, and at that point, the decision was made, the people wanted to see a county attorney here for five days, and then Mr. Dolph.
No, I don't know if they'll make that decision. That was another one of those decisions that I didn't know about, because we, we had these discussions, and then we came back in here, and all of a sudden, we had a motion to hire somebody that was already working on something that morning. So it was a done deal before it came to this meeting, before we got any further. But wait a minute now, Orange County is about five times the size of Rappahannock County, and the same law firm represents Palatine. And I talked to one of those supervisors in some functions that I, I have to attend, and they're very happy with that model. And if this county needs a full-time county attorney, there's something wrong.
Though we have a part-time county attorney at, at forty-five thousand, am I correct?
Yeah, the last time we paid, so, and it's forty-five, but by the time we paid the agreed-to amount for the increased VRS and, and insurance and stuff like that, then it's about sixty-thousand dollars.
There's no visual.
There's no charges covered by the Commonwealth attorney.
Well, we still look at the line. I didn't know that line. It was around sixty-thousand dollars.
That's because it's extra money.
What?
It's extra money in that line.
Well, why is it there?
We put it there. I don't know, you were through that process.
But you've got the forty-five, and you've got the extra VRS, but it's still, and then if we hire an additional individual, which we kind of had to do for thirty years, we're going to be over the amount that we had budgeted, number one, and we could have gotten a better deal. I see no, to use the terminology that's been used here, big workload management. I've seen no demand for it.
Well, the reason I'm asking for is not a workload issue, it's an issue of, I have to go to conferences from time to time, appointing a special prosecutor in other jurisdictions from time to time, anticipate having some dental work over the new year, and I want there to be an immediate response from my office, especially to the new zoning administrator and to the new county administrator.
Well, that, that sounds like we hired the wrong people.
What are you talking about?
Well, it sounds like if you're too busy to do it, then maybe, maybe that should be reevaluated.
I'm not too busy to do it, I'm saying that if.
And then the zoning administrator, the zoning administrator has to have their hands held by the county attorney, or the new county administrator has to have their hands held, there's something wrong.
No, Mr. Fraser, there's often times where they need legal advice. You know that.
But there's nothing that can't wait a day or two.
Sometimes they've got a burning question, and, and it's good to have a backstop, and that's what I proposed with Mr. Luke. Not, he's not going to be working, I have no, he doesn't want to, to actually go.
Why don't we hire George Davis?
What's that?
George Davis.
George Davis.
That'd save us a lot of money.
Yeah, well, sure would, but, okay, whatever. But it's not a back, it's not, I'm not complaining about the work level, I love what I'm doing, it's just that I think it makes sense to have a backup in the event that I'm ill, or especially if I'm out for like a week with this dental problem I've got. It's going to be nice to have somebody to do it. Mr. Luke helps out all the time if I have institutional knowledge questions, and he doesn't charge, it's not fair to the man, you know? When I call him up and say, Peter, can you, can you give me the background on this? And he does, and I think it's wrong to take advantage of this conference, that's all.
Mr. Chairman, Mike, this is an agenda item that we're going to get to.
You're right, but the things that need to be addressed.
I'm prepared to have the conversation, and, you know, certainly don't necessarily disagree with some of the points that you're making, but we're in a public comment right now, and I just think it's probably better that you take yourself in new business.
You're right, but I notice a lot of people have to leave right after public comment, and then they won't know that we addressed it until they go back and look at the video later on. That's why I brought it up, because it's fresh. I mean, I might forget that you guys said something that I might not agree with.
You do it first time.
Well, that's, that's probably true.
All right, well, let's move on. We're out of public comment, so let's go to the next. All right.
We have still not received any applications for that appointment. We have posted it in the paper and hope that someone will come.
I'll put this item on the agenda for two things. One is sort of a full resolution. You signed an appointment agreement, this resolution appoints Mr. Curry as county administrator effective January first, and makes him clerk to the board effective January first. And the other item is appointments that he can take over effective January first, which is Rappahannock Rappinane Regional Commission, the RSW Regional Jail Authority, and RSW Regional Jail Authorities Finance and Human Resources Committee. So those are the ones that I know off the top of my head that you can do. So it's two different actions. One is the resolution, and one is those different appointments.
I'd like to make the motion. I asked for this, and when we were interviewing him, thinking it appropriate that he be appointed this first day at work, so.
Is that proving the resolution?
Right.
We're on H two?
Yes, sir. H two, the resolution.
So do you need two separate motions, one for the?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And Mr. Penney, you just made the motion for the resolution.
Well, I thought we were doing it separately, but I'll, I'll make the motion for both then.
I'll second that.
Motion made, and so can all of the members say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye. Number three, the Rappahannock Rappinane Community Assembly Board.
That's an appointment you did not yet make. You have one application.
You have one application, and we haven't received any additional ones.
And Ms. Miller's willing to do it again, right?
No.
Well, there's no reason why we shouldn't just go ahead and reappoint her, I believe.
Yeah, she's in my district, so, and it has been difficult to fill these vacancies. We just filled the final one, I think, a month or two ago, so she's willing to continue to serve here, and you're saying you've had no other applicants? Is that correct?
Correct, that's it.
I'll make the motion to reappoint Ms. Miller to the Rappahannock Rapid and Community Services Board.
I'll second it. That's the mayor's note.
All those who voted aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The building committee?
That one was on your agenda last time, and you decided to table it to this time, because at the time you had your regular meeting, you hadn't announced your new county administrator, so the thought was to appoint him and to replace Debbie Kaiser, and then you still have to worry about Mr. Parrish, and Mr. Welsh, and Mr. Luke, who are, who are the current listed appointees for that group. They need three appointments and one alternate.
Mr. Chairman, I've received an email from a Ms. Teresa Wood, who also serves as the head of, I think, Ms. Rapp or whatever, referring to our Chamber of Commerce. She has a, as a citizen, has an interest in serving on this, on this commission. Mr. Luke drops off...
Does not have any interest.
Yeah. So there, there is someone who can serve from a citizen, who has expressed an interest in, since we tabled this last month.
You don't have the name yet?
Teresa Wood.
Oh, she is?
She is, yes, yes. And I have that email, I can provide it.
I'll take it right away. I think she would have to fill out one of those forms.
I mean, if, if we want to, like, Mr. Curry gets onboard, and Ms. Wood fills out the application form, then perhaps we can push this again next month, or...
I don't think this group, you all know better than I, meets but a couple times a year, and they've just had one in October, so I think you're safe to, I think you're safe to push it till January, that's what you would like to do.
Yeah, we'll make sure that Mr. Curry comes to get it.
Do you need a motion, or is that just consensus to do?
I think it's consensus.
Fee for board of directors?
That one was on your agenda last month, and somehow I didn't pick it up when I was doing this on Monday, and I had to add it, but you didn't take action on it. You had one application from Mr. Woolman. Meanwhile, you've had received an application from Jennifer Parker, the Director of Social Services. The executive director of People Incorporated has expressed an interest in it being the social services director, which is who the appointment was last time. And you had discussion about the requirements, which are listed in the letter. That's your last meeting.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to reappoint Jennifer Parker for this position on People Inc.
I'll second.
Mr. Chairman, I think I need to recuse myself as one of the applicants, is, again, as I said last month, suing it, so I think I should, I should recuse.
Okay. Let's see, we have a motion, one to, all of you, please, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
I'm not staying, Mr. Chairman.
You have to talk to the point. You know, it's all the way to the broadband committee update, Mr. Rapp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The broadband committee met on November the 16th to receive the results of the survey and to talk about next steps for the county. Posted late to board docs, and I apologize, but up on your screen now is a document from the CIT talking about next steps. And the broadband committee will be meeting again two weeks from today, on Monday, December the 18th, at 5:30 in the library. For the purposes of going through this document, there are, there are three steps here. First step is to, for, for the board, for the county, to determine the desired role of what kind of partnership it's looking for, and there are three, three types. We can get into the business of broadband by making all the capital investments and funding the towers, et cetera, et cetera. We can simply share some of the assets that the county owns, such as water tanks and rooftops and church steeples, or we can come up with some kind of a hybrid in which is a blend of the first two. I put the board at ease in saying that I don't believe that the committee has any strong desire to recommend that the county get into the business of running its own broadband service, but they'll make a recommendation to the board on that. Step two, talking about adopting and prioritizing broadband goals. Again, the committee is just going to make recommendations, it'll be up to the board to either accept those, reject them, or amend them, and I encourage board members to take a look at that, because there are a lot of the survey statistics that are in here that are, that are pretty good, including priority areas where we need to focus first, we may want to focus first, but again, there isn't going to be one side stick following, there's not going to be one service where we throw a switch and everybody gets broadband at the same time. So we're going to have to prioritize. And then lastly, in step three, specified what the county is willing to share or, or invest, we really didn't report that we had any county property, you know, that we didn't own any county property on which some of this equipment could go on. So we'll be, the committee will be addressing that, and what I'm thinking, gentlemen, is that they'll come, I think, someone in the committee will come before us on January 6th, which is our next regularly scheduled meeting, with these recommendations in hand, and then the ball will be in the court of the, of the board as to how it wants to decide going forward on broadband solutions. And the committee won't necessarily disband, but a big part of its job will have been accomplished.
Peter, your next meeting's January 3rd.
3rd, I'm sorry. Apologize, the 3rd.
What day do you have it's here?
The 6th, probably a Saturday. 3rd's a Wednesday.
If I catch that, I'm glad she did. Thank you, Mr. Rapp. I'd hate to be here on Saturday.
There goes the chairman, that's the report. Again, the committee meets again on December the 18th, two weeks from today. Any questions?
I guess we need to sort of look at the series of longer options.
The last, the last thing I'll say up there, the county attorney walked out of here, but the county is going to need to take a look at participating in Virginia's PPEA Act, Public Private Partnership Education Act, I think it's called, but that's the, that's the vehicle on which to apply for broadband grants. And if we don't have it, there's a bunch, there's a lot of money we won't have any access to. So there'd need to be a resolution by the board if we decide to, decide to do that. There's, there's no cost, it's just a matter of adopting a resolution and being able to participate in the PPP, PPEA grant world. Stay tuned on that. That's Mr. PPEA right there.
I don't think they do that if you put them in a worship and conserve too.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I guess you guys can keep going, the building task board?
Maybe, somehow we missed getting any meetings scheduled, but I don't know, everybody's attention is focused on a bunch of other things, so we're going to try and schedule that for next week. I don't know exactly where we are with some of the projects.
Do you have any update on...
I can tell you that we awarded a contract for someone to look at grant options, and I just got the email today that I've not had a chance to look at, and we awarded a contract for a company to come in and map the underground utilities, and they're working on that, and all of the new windows have been installed in the visitor's center. So those are the three new things that I can think of off the top of my head.
Yeah, from what I understand, with speaking with Mr. Jenkins, a lot of the utilities, county-owned utilities, not utility-owned stuff, it's not exactly where he colored those. We need to know exactly where everything is before we start. If there are any dangers, we're digging anywhere. When you call mission, they only come out and mark the utility, they don't mark the private or any stuff.
They don't mark what?
The privately owned stuff. They won't, they won't mark the lines that we have sent out and forth between buildings, that's done by the county.
They don't have the equipment to do that, or they just don't do it?
They don't do it. They're only supposed to mark, they've got contracts with the utilities, and that's all we want.
So we would have to hire somebody with the equipment?
That's what you're doing right there, yes. It's, it's very critical that we don't hit something.
And then contract, the cost turned out to be under $5,000, so it was something I could have walked up the board's approval.
And what's, how's the schedule moving, moving your office into the visitor's center?
We still have to get a date to get the phone lines installed. As many as called about that, and we'll wait for a call back, because we can't really get that ready, and then we'll have to sort of figure it out.
So do you anticipate moving there before the end of the year?
I don't know, it's going to involve probably a weekend of packing and sort of trying to organize and get set up, at least. We'd like to do that, I'm not sure we're going to be able to do it.
Right.
That'd be, we'd be better.
Probably going to take a professional crew to come out and get it out. It might have been different when we had trustees, but we don't have the many people that...
The tower site.
There's not a whole lot of new information on the tower sites. Art, Candyquist had requested a look at the cause of construction at the Flower Site, but I don't think that's been done yet. I have a...
This is the Public Safety Committee.
Right. I think the adherence looked at the possible CSW site, as far as...
They just did a computer, I guess, generated assessment, and determined that that would be sufficient.
So, that's all I know of, unless, well, I knows of something else.
I don't. I was waiting for that for a little bit.
All right, and he has put item number four on the Public Safety Committee, non-dated.
Mr. Chairman, Public Safety Committee met on November 28th. What was discussed there is a lot of that's, well, some of that's already been touched on here. Mr. Candyquist was able to give us a good overview as, in his role as Enron Emergency Services Coordinator, on the status of the tower, as well as, as well as the radios. And I guess the big takeaway on the radios was that FAWK here is encountering a problem now, Blue Mountain and View Tree, and it may cause up to... On the board?
Could be six months, could be eight months, I mean, it's hard to say.
So it's going, it's going to cause a delay in deployment, which may buy us a little more time on the tower matter, but since they're the big driver in the seat, we have to wait until they get that straight, straightened out. There was also a discussion about Mr. Comar needing a radio in his vehicle from inventory, and that was, I think, discussed, and Mr. Candyquist is in the process of getting that, getting that resolved. There was discussion, Mr. Glenny, Mr. Candyquist, Mr. Bennick, and others there, about the status of the fire and rescue services agreement, which I think is, is up in, for discussion in our January meeting, January 3rd. And there are still changes being worked out with Mr. Goff and the association, I guess the chiefs. And maybe also, this would be a, an apropos time to really give kudos to our first responders over this accident with the school bus out on, out on 211. I know there's a lot of talk about whether or not we need to pay EMS or what we need going forward, but the statistics on this school bus rollover are impressive. There were five medics, two ambulances, two utility vehicles with EMTs responding within one to two minutes. The call went out at 7:52 a.m., and the last ambulance, which came from Chester Gap, which was most likely the furthest away, arrived at 8:11, which was only 19 minutes later. It was a pretty amazing response by our first responders, all volunteer, and we all know, you know, that turned out to be a good story, because nobody was hurt severely, you know, was hurt bad, but I think this board needs to know that it's volunteer, fire, rescue, it's doing an extremely commendable job with this as a, you know, it's probably the most telling example in the last couple, I guess the last, in recent memory for me, anyway. So, just like to make that acknowledgement to our first responder committee.
I just wonder if career staff would have been able to do any better than that in the building committees?
Nope. Getting out there in one to two minutes. Company one, Company one was on the scene in two minutes.
The only thing I'll add to that is there was some discussion of our emergency shelter being the high school and having the ability to hook up to the generator, and therefore making it really a functional emergency shelter.
All right, anything else? Next item, Building Department fee.
The board asked for a recommendation from their building official, Rich Cornell, and you have a resolution and a proposed building permit fee schedule in your packet that they put together for the board's consideration. Your code says that you adopt the building department fees by resolution, so if there is a resolution for you to adopt, if you would like to endorse the fees, I'd recommend to Mr. Cornell.
I don't know if I just didn't know how to read the paperwork he gave us. Did he indicate which fees had gone up and how much in that paperwork?
I don't think he did.
But these, what he's proposed fulfills the, the aim of having fees cover, cover the expenses of his office, right?
I don't know that he looked at it as completely covering the expenses of his office as much as trying to propose a fee schedule that was at least reasonable in comparison to the other localities.
Right. Well, if he's researched and presented this, I see no reason for not to accept it.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Oh, yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion, except for he proposed the fee schedule.
It doesn't then be to adopt a resolution.
Right.
But, just, just, just...
But just, just, just... We can have discussion there after we get seconded.
I'll second it. Motion made in second, is there any more discussion?
Well, to Mr. Bennick's point, I'm looking at the fee schedule for permitting inspections dated July of 2014, and then I'm looking at Mr. Cornell's spreadsheet comparing us to other jurisdictions. I, I don't see where the fees that he's outlining red differ from what we're doing right now, so if we're talking, if you gentlemen see anything different, please let me know. If the drill here is to increase the fees, because we do need to make up for the budget shortage, I don't see where that's getting done here.
I think the chart is the proposed fees.
But is the, is the...
Not the current fees.
I, I, yeah, I, I don't see any difference between chart and the description of fees. But I mean, I haven't had a chance to look at it all, so maybe I'm missing something.
I don't see where you've got comparisons to the old fees, except that it says, yeah, it does say if you're sitting...
That's, that's, I think is just left in the title from the floor. This is the proposed, the new proposed fees.
But I noticed just a couple of them up there, which have increased like $10 here and maybe $25 there. But I, I, no, I don't, I just don't, I forgot this to know, the charges, or what was charged before. I know I remember paying the commercial, $175 in copper, I think it's a million and $150, and then you have the permit fee on top of that. So it's, this is still below copper. But it is what it is, I mean, I make the most expensive hay in three counties, but that doesn't mean I can charge more for it. If you look at the cost of my equipment breakdowns, it makes some really expensive hay.
Pretty lousy hay, too.
Pretty lousy quality.
So one of the issues here is by state code, we can't charge more than what it costs for the, for the office to run itself.
Right.
So typically we underestimate it by a little bit, what our costs are going to be, and the fact that we don't really know how many applications for building are going to come in in any particular year, so...
I would be shocked if you're in any danger of impacting the way that you spend. I don't think, I don't think anybody does.
Maybe we put this into place and then reassess it a bunch of times and see how we're doing.
Well, the next question, when does this go, go into effect?
The resolution is written that it goes into effect when you adopt it, but you can change that date if you prefer. It says December 4th.
Now, I think we should do it as soon as possible, because there's going to be a hole there.
That's why I put December 4th in there, because Mr. Fraser, well, felt there was some urgency in that, because we were kind of a little behind the eight ball, so I went in, made it effective, pretty much immediately.
Did you get a second?
I have a moment. And a second, we're in discussion. With no further discussion, I'll call the Board, although if they would say aye.
Aye.
All votes made.
Is it a resolution now?
There's a resolution, yes, sir.
Yes.
That was to adopt the resolution for proposed fees. Was that five zero?
Yes.
Next item, the adoption of the Board policy regarding hiring department directors.
The Board adopted a policy which we kind of wrote quickly at your November the 8th continued meeting, and that's it. So what I said I would do is put it, you know, fluff it up and put it in the format of the other policies, and so it turned into that, which basically just puts it in the same, the same content in the format that we've been using for newly adopted policies. I did make one change, and I want to make sure the Board is aware of that. When you see here number two, it says the Board Supervisors' desires to be involved in interview and selection of department director-level positions. Before it said department-level positions, which I don't think is what the word that you meant, I think you meant department head level. And so I put the word director in there. So if that's not what you want, we can take that back out again, because the policy that you adopted said interview and selection of department-level position, which is basically everybody.
Well, just a head.
Right, which is not what you discussed. I changed it to department head in this draft policy.
But the way that this is worded, it's every time that one of those vacancies might occur, we want the Board's attention, and then we direct whether we want involvement or not, and we want involvement, I believe every time. That was my...
What do you think that decision might come up?
Would you, would you just...
Well, I think we just need to strike that language so that we're not doing that, because it makes it so easy for us to not do anything, and I want to see this board move away from that.
But maybe at some point, for time element, or the fact that we don't want to micromanage too much.
Well, we can, we can say that then, but we don't need that here in print. How do you do?
Let me clarify what I was trying to call, are you talking about 101.4?
But this is a change from what we adopted a month ago.
Are you talking about 101.4, Mr. Fraser, number two?
101.1.2.2 and 101.4.2. So you can both say the same thing, basically.
Well, what it says is that if there's a vacancy in one of the designated positions, the county administrator will come to Board meetings, say, can we have this vacancy? And then get direction on the level of involvement the Board wishes to have. In other words, does the Board want to do all the interviews? Does the Board want him to do one set and make a recommendation to you of two or three candidates, how involved is the Board going to be? So you would be able to say for each one, what the Board, how the Board wanted to be involved.
This is wrong, because this is not what I agreed to a month ago. We had a sticking point a month ago, and I, and I agreed to something like this. I still didn't like the exact language, but now we're wording it down even further if we adopt this. This is obligating the deal that we had a month ago.
Mr. Fraser, this is just a draft, and so the Board needs to...
But nobody, who, who asked for this draft? This is not what I, I envision you doing.
Then, then change it.
That's what I'm saying, it shouldn't even be here. It needs to be struck. If we decide at each given time if we're going to have less or more involvement, we can make that decision then. We don't need to have some policy that says that we're going to do that at each and every turn.
Why does it hurt to have it in here?
Why do we need it? This is a board that is, is famous for doing as little as possible. Why do we want to continue that?
Well, by removing it, how do you get what you need by removing it? I guess that's where I'm...
Because we can set a policy at that meeting, we can say, well, we'll, we'll go ahead and let you advertise it, or whatever. We don't have to have something here that says that we'll make a decision at that time if we're going to do anything, or, or, we're back to where it was a month ago, where it was written in the contract. And the contract shouldn't have had it written in at the start of it. And we, we made an agreement, and now you're obligating it.
Right. No, I think we're just trying to work it out. I don't, I don't know why you're upset, because I think we're just going to try to work the language out to...
Just strike it. Strike, strike 101.2, item two, and 101.4, item two. Strike it, and I can work with this. We can make those decisions on a case-by-case basis. We don't have to have language in here saying that we may or may not do something at that point, all right? Everyone on this board should be in ad hoc enough to be able to make those decisions as they come, come to us.
Mr. ...
That's what I was saying, we make a decision when it comes to it.
101.2, number two, is the exact word in which you are in the past, except for the insertion of that one word. So is there a problem with that piece, 101.2, number two? This is word-for-word what's over here, except that I just explained that I inserted department director-level positions. So that's the same.
Well, it was, it was, I don't know, we can, we can, that can be modified later, the director-level positions, we can always be changing that, so that it never means what we, we think it's going to be. But all right, I can live with that one, but 101.4.2 needs to be struck, because that's an obligation of the, of the deal that, that this board made when, when I thought we could tell the hire the county administrator a month ago. That language should not have been in the contract, and now this is, this is, this is a deal breaker after the fact. Well, and I don't know why this keeps happening.
Then back on the motion to approve that policy without that section.
Well, then so moved. I made the motion to approve this policy, which is striking the language of 101.4, item two. Because this is not what the Board approved a month ago.
Then Oliver would say, what that section was trying to do is say, okay, the county administrator has this responsibility, and then the Board has this responsibility. So all that does is it takes out the Board's piece. So the county administrator then would have the responsibility to let the Board know if the vacancy in place discussion on the agenda at the next Board. That would be the only responsibility to solicit in policy. You've just taken that out.
Is that a motion?
There was a motion.
My, my concern is whether or not that, I mean, we, we structured this language with the new county administrator in mind coming on board, who was aware that this is what the Board wanted to do and change it. You know, my affective perspective on it, but I'm fine, I'm fine with leaving in 101.2.2 and taking out 101.4.2, so I think it still gets us where we need to be. I'm going to second Mr. Fraser's motion.
Any other discussion? All of us, if they would say aye.
Aye.
All of us, if they would say aye. Motion carried.
And that's just to give you an update that I haven't really gotten very far with this. One of the things I want to do is check the B dot, see if we can take it back on their contract, which was discussed at the last meeting, by the coming meeting, thing done on this particular item in the last meeting.
Sure.
I think, I think it's a good idea.
It'll take five minutes.
Whoever it is, I tell you what, one thing I would never, I would never, ever do this again, as long as I live. I don't know, I would have...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I think, I know that's why.
Listen, public...
I just go by, I saw Brian, the editor, on the building, and I said, why? We're being on the board, which is, which is, I'm running to your contact, I'm... Yes, someone must know your talk. There are tests.
I'm trying to get some help from that. There was just...
That's the only, that's the only thing.
This has been mentioned earlier, and I received a request through Mr. Candyquist regarding the Vulture Fire and Rescue Association wanting you to consider an amendment to your sign ordinance, and this is the document that they sent. In section 170-94, no permit for a sign shall be required for, and they would like you to consider adding under M, fire and rescue companies. So the agenda item is here for the Board to, to tell Mr. Goff and I whether or not you want us to advertise a public hearing or hold a public hearing to consider such an amendment.
Well, it certainly wouldn't hurt to have, wouldn't hurt to have a public hearing by it. It would be good to see how the citizens help, and I...
I don't know, we can add this to the, with the recently coming May amendments, the May amendments.
Well, they've already had public hearings on those amendments.
No, not the May amendments. They were supposed to be, they had voted to advertise them, but didn't get advertised the changeover amendments, got to put in front of them, and so they still have to have those amendments, a public hearing for those amendments, so I don't know why this can't be added to that.
And most of those May amendments, if I'm correct, have to do with the tourist home issue.
Well, it's a lot, it's tourist home and B and Bs, but it's also some, some belts and suspenders that are bringing into housekeeping with the building code requirements and the administrative code of Code of Virginia. But this, this, I don't see a reason to add it to that.
It's a different style.
There, there are one, there's apples and oranges.
Well, it's an amendment to the document.
I have an issue, even though we talked about size, and maybe what it would, would not do, what is outlined in the proposal here, doesn't put any limitation on it, and I tell you what, I felt very, and I think many people in the county do not like how the school went about just popping up a sign without any input from the community and without some restriction or language to get, and looked at, potentially, you know, we're giving them free rein to put up whatever they want.
You can, you can add the language that, well, if it does the credit condition, that's where the...
issue.
Well, it's a lot, it's tourist home and B and Bs, but it's also some belts and suspenders that are bringing into housekeeping with the building code requirements and the administrative code of code of Virginia. This, this, I don't see what to add to that.
It's a different style.
There there one, it's apples and oranges.
Well, it's an amendment to the document.
I have an issue, even though we talked about sign size and maybe what it would and would not do, what is outlined in the proposal here, doesn't put any limitation on it. And I tell you what, I felt very, I think many people in the county did not like how the school went about just popping up a sign without any input from the community and without some restriction or language to get, and looked at potentially, you know, we're giving them free reign to put up whatever they want.
You can add the language that, well, if it goes to planning commission, that's where the language can be added. But you, I don't see why the board certainly couldn't send some sort of direction that limited to the area that they're about right now or some arbitrary number that we could come up with.
And by which, probably they should refer this to the planning commission to begin with, so that they can make a recommendation of whatever.
Hold a public hearing.
You may have.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
I'd also like to.
What?
Sure. I'm saying we could send some sort of direction if we wanted to.
Also, would be curious in how it would benefit the community and the fire department. Is something that would potentially get new recruits or I hear, you know, potentially notify people of the danger of open air fire, the amber alert, red alert. But for the expense, and I'm assuming that the county, because we're funding the fire rescue basically more or less 100%, that this is an expense that the county is taking on, and is this something that the county really wants to be paying for? Is this a core thing that is going to enhance both the county and the volunteer fire, and how it's going to do that, if it is? I have just some questions I have to be put out there that I feel should be answered.
Well, I'll make a motion that we send this over to the planning commission, and they can have their public hearing on this request.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next item, the resolution should authorize county attorney to hire a deputy attorney.
This request was made by Mr. Goff, and you have a resolution in the county packet which would authorize him to hire Peter Luke as a deputy county attorney and pay for the line item that's indicated in the resolution. Just up on the board.
Well, we've talked about it some. We're going to talk, probably talk about it a little more, but I'll go ahead and make a motion that we pass this resolution for some of the reasons that we've already heard. We already have the money in budget. We're not going to get this far with any less of a burden on our budget, given the fact that our other options would be way more expensive and probably would not be where it is proficient. So I'd make a motion that we go ahead and pass this resolution. I'm opposed to at least one paragraph of the order in this resolution.
I will second it just so that we can have discussion on this and talk about any changes that may or may not need to be made.
Okay, motion made and seconded. I guess we'll go to discussion. Mr. Goff, do you want to add anything, please?
Yes, Mr. Fraser. I don't envision having to ask Peter to help out very much. It's pretty much under control. Where I do really appreciate Peter's input is on historical issues. For instance, we were talking about the Harmony Manor case the other day, and there was a lot of information that Peter has in his head that isn't in the file. So when I pull out a file like that, you know, the file's six inches thick, and it really helps to be able to call him up and say, here's this order. I don't understand what was in, what was the context of this. So in that regard, you know, and he has been helping me with that historical stuff. The other thing is, I'm response, I'm responsive to some of the constitutional officers. They call me, they have questions. The zoning administrator, the county administrator is in frequent contact with me. Sometimes, like I said, I anticipate some extensive dental work in New Year, going to the common office, the common attorney's, you know, spring institute, other CLE requirements that I have, and sometimes I'm out of pocket. It helps to have somebody as, not only as a mental backstop, but also as a actual person there to answer a procedural question. Because as you know, over the last 18 months, whether to cancel a meeting or hold a meeting, that's a decision that has to be made afterward. You know, if it hasn't been properly advertised, then those decisions I've had to make, you know, snap. Plus, the other various boards come to me for advice. The library just got a million dollar grant, thankfully, but they've come up with a question for me that is, it's rather involved, and that is, does the whole board have to vote if they're going to buy stock through their broker with their, through their investment firm? Does the approved investor standard apply? That's a legal research project that I think that Mr. Luke could help me with, because I want to give him the right advice. So I don't anticipate Peter coming back on, even on a part-time basis. This is, like I said, is a backstop person, and I will, like, I can tell you that in the last 30 days, he may have two hours in, in assisting me. So I don't anticipate being used. It's more or less an emergency backstop. You know, what happens if I get hit by a truck, as Primi says sometimes? It, you know, it could be months before you get a replacement. It'd be nice to have Peter in there to serve his board. So that's what it's about. It's not like creating a new position where it's going to be something that is, where it is regularly involved. I don't anticipate that, and that's essentially what it's about. So it does, don't get the wrong impression. I think there's a limitation as to eight hours a week in that, in that contract, but I don't even anticipate using that.
Well, actually, that was where my question was, Mr. Goff. So in paragraph four, it says, not exceed eight hours a week unless authorized by the board supervisors, but in no case shall exceed 30 hours a week. It's a big difference between eight and 30. So he has, you have the authority to use him up to eight hours, and then anything beyond that you come to the board supervisors?
Yeah, and that would be like if we get, if we get more litigation, say the VML declines coverage on, something like that, where we're back to, you know, a two-man team to defend some sort of suit. And of course, I'd be seeking the board's approval if that were the case, to have, you know, litigation, if we have litigation for Mr. Luke's assistance. But he's limited, because he's drawing his retirement from VRS, he can't exceed 30 hours. Or he has to be strictly on a temporary basis. You'll also notice that this is a six-month agreement. So, and, and one of the reasons we thought this was good was changeover in zoning administration and also new county administrator, plus I've got a murder case going on right now. So any assistance that I can get, you know, would be appreciated. And as I said, I don't, I don't think at all that Mr. Luke intends to do this with the aim of making money from the county. He's retired and enjoying his retirement. And quite frankly, he puts up with me bothering him out of some song, because he doesn't need, he doesn't end us.
End no pay. Well, after working for the county for 30 years, and he does have a lot of institutional knowledge off the top of his head. I think it'd be, I think it's a no-brainer. I have a problem with wait paragraph 10 is worded. It says it's, agreement is not solicited by you, that's by Mr. Luke, but was requested by the county to assist the county with the transition to a new county administrator and a new zoning administrator. I've never heard this discussed before in a meeting with this board, and I have a problem with that. I don't think we need it for that reason. And I don't, I don't want to be party to, to an agreement that says that. All right, I'll amend my motion to strike paragraph 10. That doesn't affect anything?
That doesn't affect anything.
Yeah, I'll leave the motion there and amend it to strike paragraph 10. The second problem I have is, since this has shown up on board docs, I've had several people contact me, and it believes that Mr. Luke ought to be able to retire, and that should be the end of it. I think, I think this is a, well, you said it's a maximum of six months, right? But this is, this is, this would allow without any board involvement, $4,800 a month, eight hours a week. It's something we already have in our budget. It's a whole lot cheaper than our expense alternative. No, it's not really. I've already approached on that. If we had done a different thing, we wouldn't be going this now because that gentleman, the firm, just wanted to furnish clear of the county. Yeah, well, that's utilizing the subjective case, which is too late to go back. It's never, it's never too late. Yeah, I mean, if you propose to hire Mr. Goff, fire Mr. Goff and hire somebody from Frank. I'm just saying that all these years, we didn't have the two attorneys. I don't know why we need to do it now. I think it's a good idea. Maybe we have to advertise. See, you're required. I have, we got a motion and a second.
Motion and second. I'd like to make a comment to the fact that I've known Mr. Luke for a lot of years, and there's no attorney, and I know of a surrounding critical candidates works with such thorough investigation, and has the integrity that Mr. Luke has. And to argue over whether he takes this position to help us out is almost ridiculous.
I don't think we need to help, Mr. Chairman.
No, then we disagree. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Could I have a clarification? Because we had a motion to pass the resolution, and Mr. Parrish said he wanted to amend it to strike number 10, but I think he needs the seconders agreement, don't you?
I second that motion as amended, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Goff, all votes? Yes, thank you. Mr. Frager? Aye. Mr. Lozinski?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Mr. Welsh, same time, also. Next item? Motion fails, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, we've been on the board now for 20-plus years, both of us. An addendum item requires unanimous consent, and it has for 25 years, three days, both of us. This is not an addendum.
I didn't think it was an addendum either.
It says addendum, on the agenda. How many votes do we still have? I really think that if we're going to do this, this is more of a policy statement, and maybe at the January meeting, Ms. Smith can have some input and comments on it.
I don't know if this is appropriate, but also in January, it might be good to have a discussion on that policy, policy about our agenda, and if in fact, I know only because we've gotten into this question before, whether or not the interpretation of the language with respect to needing a unanimous vote on an addendum item.
It's not an interpretation, it's plain English.
I think it's subject to interpretation. I mean, that's just been, I've heard people, I've heard people give that opinion.
You can, you can add it to the agenda for discussion. It's a majority prerogative, but it takes unanimous consent for an action item. And sometimes I have y'all believing that it's one or the other, but it's always one way, because y'all will not read the rules and understanding for yourself, so I can't help that. But those rules were in place when both Mr. Welsh and myself came on the board. He had been there five years before me, something like that. And it was so that, so that things couldn't just come in here, and the public wouldn't know what's going on, and all of a sudden this board takes action, does something that nobody knew about, because it wasn't on public agenda. It wouldn't matter if it went on two days before the meeting, or if it went on five days before the meeting started. And so that the public can have involved. Well, I don't understand, because we did not, when we have an amendment, when we have an agenda amendment, we vote on that before the meeting, and I don't remember doing that in this case. It was on the, it was on the agenda, it went on Tuesday, right? Mr. Parrish, do you, do you not read our, our manual? What are you talking about? I don't know why you're asking a question. It's very plain, under the rules of the meeting, that you have to have unanimous consent for an addendum. Yeah, I understand that, I understand that. So what you're saying is, this item was not put on the agenda five days prior to this meeting. Is that what you're saying? That may, it's an addendum.
It's still the orders of the day, gentlemen.
What's that?
It's still the orders of the day. This thing was published, what, Wednesday? And y'all voted to unanimously this, or earlier today to adopt it. So I don't think it's an addendum in the sense that 30-2 is talking about a surprise add-on at the last minute.
But it's an action item, and it's an addendum. It was on board docs. It's been on board docs for a long.
Well, the original, as you know, I had a death in my family last week. So the agenda was motioned on Monday before I left. And that item was not on the agenda on Monday, but when I got back to work on Wednesday, I had to add two or three things that I had missed. And those three things I discussed at the beginning of the meeting, E2, H5, and J2. The one that's F4 that I also added, that you also voted to add, was brand spanking new. But those three were added like last Wednesday.
So they've been on board docs for days, so it's not a surprise to the public. I just use that as a, as an example. This is, it's an addendum item. We've been calling it an addendum item since Wednesday or Thursday. It was called an addendum item on the agenda right now. So now you're saying it's not an addendum. It either is or isn't. It either was or it wasn't.
It's about, it's 30-2. Unless a matter appears on orders of the day, no action shall be taken by the board. So Mr. Fraser, as you, as a proponent of this argument, tell us how this is not a part of the orders of the day.
It's an addendum item to the agenda. The agenda came out on Tuesday, and it's an addendum item.
Well, how does that affect whether it's part of the orders of the day today?
Because we called it at the very beginning of the meeting, an addendum item.
Well, somewhat. It's still, it's still on for action.
You can read it either way, right?
No.
Is that what we're back to?
No, that's not. If, if, I would agree with you, if this was something that I brought up right now, and said, I want you to take action on it.
But it was called an addendum. It was not on the published agenda when it went out. It's not on the published agenda as an item when it went out on the FOIA list.
It's still the orders of the day.
It's not the orders of the day.
It is.
We announced it as an addendum item. If you wanted to make that argument, you shouldn't make that argument at 2:00, sir.
No, I'm making it now. I'm saying.
Well, you're too late.
Well, we'll see. The board just voted to, that it, that the resolution would pass.
The board voted on an addendum item. And if you're trying to change that now, after all the years that this board has used this process.
I'm not changing it. I've watched this board for years too, Mr. Fraser, and I'm telling you that.
You've done what?
I've watched this board for years.
Then this has always been in place since I've been on this board, and it's been used just exactly this way.
If it weren't on the published agenda, I would agree with you.
It wasn't on the published agenda when it was first, when it first came out. Well, the way I, I mean, just short time I've been on the board, it's true that if we amend the addendum, amend the agenda as the meeting begins, yes, but this has been on board docs. This has been. Board docs is not this. Board docs is not your FOIA list.
When did that FOIA list go ever since Wednesday? Ever since Wednesday, so it's not a surprise to anybody.
The FOIA list, when did that addendum go out?
The first FOIA distribution went out on Monday, which Ms. May did for me after I left, and then Ms. May, we sent out a second one with the addendums, right? The date is, uh?
First, like Wednesday.
Wednesday, we sent out a second.
And you don't have your deadline, you've missed your deadline, Mr. Golf.
Why that?
You don't have your three days for those addendum items.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Three days.
I don't think that you made it.
I don't think so.
But what is the problem that we can't wait one month that we've just been on the agenda for January?
That it started off.
It really, you know, I'm not here to tell you why it's critical as far as time, it's just simply that it needs to be done. I think it's unfair, Peter, to ask him to help and then not have him paid.
Well, this county's been good to Mr. Luke.
What's that?
This county has been good to Mr. Luke. He got paid for all the work that he did, and he got paid for work that he caused, so I don't think that you've got a good argument there.
Well, I don't think you've got too many sympathetic ears, Mr. Fraser.
I don't care. Just because they don't read the rules, just because they won't read statutes, doesn't mean that they have an argument that's any more weighted than mine. If you want to keep going down this road, we can do this, I'm prepared. I'm prepared to argue, this is just the point of the argument. You're, for one thing, you're trying to change the rules of board procedure right now for this one single vote, and I'd like to know what is the overriding action that we've got to have this today versus next month and do it properly?
Like I said, I just told you, why?
I don't think I'm.
I'm just trying to assist the man who not get.
Well, excuse me, we're not gaining any ground here, let's go ahead and put it on the agenda for next month.
Could I ask if 30-point, 30-2A pertains? Because it basically says if the chairman or any member of the board wants to add an item that's not on the agenda, you present it, and move to consider it. Such motion must be seconded and approved by a majority of the board, but the manner being considered.
That's what we did. We added it.
Right, so then once it becomes a matter of the day, it's treated just like any other agenda item, it doesn't require unanimous consent to be approved.
It's an addendum item, that's what we've always called it, that's the way that we've always looked at it.
I don't see the reference to the word addendum in any of the section 30, so if it's in there, someone called to my attention, I see orders of the day, but I do not see anything about addendum, how addendum fits in with order of the day. Your direction is?
That's the way we always viewed it, the way that we've always handled it. If it was not on the initial agenda that went out to the public, then it was considered an addendum.
And, you know, just speaking from the outside looking in, my suggestion would be that this section of your code be revised so that it's clear, because since I've been here in July, y'all have argued about this point at least a half a dozen times.
Well, most of the arguments.
Excuse me, excuse me, I was.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but that's an editorial comment, you like to make those too.
I tried to interrupt people, Mr. Fraser. It's not clear to me, when I read it, I interpreted it to mean a certain thing, and then I was told in the meeting that it didn't mean that, so that means to a layperson, it's not clear. So my suggestion is, it's very common for board members to consider changes in their rules of procedure at their organizational meeting in January, and I think this is one place where your code is not clear, because if it were clear, you wouldn't be arguing about it at every other meeting, and which is what you all do.
Yes, we would.
So it just needs to be clarified one way or the other, so that it's clear to the average reader, what the heck it means.
Well, let's discuss it at the January meeting then.
And the way I interpret this, again, and I know you don't agree, is that once the board adds an item to the agenda, we can call it an addendum all we want to, but this agenda is, means nothing until you adopt it. You adopted it at the beginning of the meeting, and once you adopt it, whatever has been added becomes the orders of the day.
We've never done that.
And I understand that you say that, and I haven't been here, so I can't speak to that. I'm just saying that's what I thought that meant, because once this agenda is adopted, it's really a draft agenda until the board adopts, it's not even your agenda until you take that action. So I can list 15,000 things on here, and I don't have any meaning until you adopt it.
If we go by that, then we would constantly be adding stuff without the public's input at all, border knowledge.
And the boards do that all the time because things come up at the last minute.
But rather than having, it doesn't have to be like those other boards, we should be having more public involved.
You certainly do not, and you certainly are not.
Anyway, we have the county attorney here, and I would defer to him on the decision.
I thought the chair asked if we put it on for January.
Right, well, he mentioned it, but he didn't give a second, so I would defer to the county attorney for her opinion on whether or not this is a legal vote.
Well, as I said, I think it's part of the orders of the day, and Mr. Fraser's, the tradition is correct, and he says that these last-minute thing that didn't appear on the published agenda would require unanimity. I believe that's always the way that it's been interpreted, was interpreted that way by Mr. Carkey and Mr. Luke and by me. In fact, I told Brenda, I know she disagrees with the way I read that, but you can't read subsection A to render subsection C meaningless, you have to try to harmonize those two sections. And in doing so, I agree with Mr. Fraser, that if this was a surprise attack, and that's what this was intended to do, that was the intention of the author, who I believe was Mr. Luke, was to cut off the surprise attack when the board members on the outside, a couple or three of them get together, they're going to put, ram something through with no notice, that, this would prohibit that from happening.
It hasn't though.
What do you mean it hasn't?
Do I have to be real plain about this today? You have been involved in that jury saying thing as county attorney.
Doing what?
Two supervisors ringing something through. We had a discussion about that.
I don't know what you're talking about.
The thing was I wanted to start with. That was a violation of the board's policy and the resolution that we adopted on June 29th. They were supposed to work together, Mr. Lasinski and Mr. Parrish, and come up with a list of names that this board would consider for interim county administrator, and the next thing I know, you're passing around emails saying that you just about better contract, depending on July 5th. You want to do, I can expose those emails, sir, they're not.
You go right ahead, Mr. Fraser.
That's exactly what happened, and now you want to try and overturn the rules, and Mr. Luke, who supposedly helped write these rules 25 years ago, he has exactly sat right there and said that that's the way that they operate, and now you want to overturn it to hire the man. Let's just do what the chairman said and go to January 3rd.
The question was, was this a legal vote? I'm trying to answer that question, and the question was from Mr. Parrish, so I'm trying to answer.
But I've already told you what you've done and opposite of what you state. You've already done the exact opposite.
Sometimes I think we speak a different English.
No, sir, we do not. I can take you and show you the June 29th resolution and then what you did on July 5th. Those are contrary to what you just said.
Sir, we're going far afield with this issue, really.
Can't get any, can't get any further.
I'm not prepared to answer questions on what happened on June 29th, because quite frankly, I don't remember.
I remember very well because I was on the outside of that altogether, and so was Mr. Bennett, he had no knowledge of what was going on, and Mr. Welsh.
Ron, will you not speak for me, please?
You said it's a town, you didn't have the email.
Mr. Chairman, we're far afield.
Yeah, I don't know who we're going to.
I'm not speaking for you, it's a matter of record, it was in the video.
Let's close this matter.
January 3rd.
We'll come back.
But, Mr. Chairman, to my earlier point, I would like to see this on the agenda for January to discuss Chapter 30, Article 1. So to the county administrator's point, let's get this resolved once and for all, and if this is, in fact, the way that it's been done, and we want to do it going forward, then let's make the language a lot clearer, because this is a conversation.
I agree with you. Y'all just don't want to talk about things, how they happened.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but before you move on, do we have a valid motion that was passed here or not?
There wasn't a motion denied.
No, I mean, to pass the resolution, an agenda item J2, was that a valid vote or not a valid vote, because otherwise, I need to know if it was.
It was a five to four, a five to, four to one vote.
So was that item passed or not?
It was, but.
Mr. Attorney, county attorney, it was passed.
So the county, sorry, it's passed.
Okay. You know, and this is wrong. This has never been done like this, and for y'all to railroad something through right now, what is the hurry for this? What is, what is the behind-the-scenes playing on this item?
Like any other vote.
No, it's not. It is not. This just came out of nowhere.
Let's go to the next item on the.
Mr. Chairman, we were supposed to do this again on January 3rd, and now all of a sudden, it's been approved. What happened? You're on that end of the table, what just happened?
Legal advice.
Legal advice, so we're going to overturn 25 years of what this board has done because of one, one comment?
It was out there on the agenda for three days, Mr. Golf said that was required, and so it's currently a legal vote.
I have some.
Let's continue, okay? I'm probably thinking the same argument.
Well, I'm protesting at the very strongest terms possible. I'm tired of this type of behavior, Mr. Chairman, and I want that in the minutes.
I think we got that on camera.
No, I want it in the minutes, I want to make sure that it's in the minutes. But this has never happened before, and I do not understand why it's happening like this right now.
Let's go to the update from the.
How come the argument wasn't made earlier when they wanted to sell the army truck? That was the same type of argument, the same type of situation, that the argument was not made then. But you make it now because we've got to have Mr. Luke hired today. Why?
Well, we can do it in January too, I guess, or whatever.
I just thought that he did, but then the county attorney just overrules your comments. So where are we with this?
I'd like to go to county administrator update.
Okay, just briefly, during the past month, we prepared a budget amendment, AS spreadsheet, resolution, and other related documents in order to advertise and present the amended budget for the board's public hearing later tonight. We advertised, reviewed applications, interviewed, and made a job offer for the executive assistant to the county administrator, who will start on January 1st, that's Lauren's whole position. We created the board hiring policy based on sort of the rough form that you passed on November the 8th, which you've already talked about earlier today, and you passed with modification. Ms. May arranged for the scales at Amesville to be calibrated, which was done, and there were any adjustments made, and that allows the two landfill employees who were previously designated as a waymaster to get that designation renewed with the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. We communicated with the Virginia Department of General Services about the vehicles and the equipment previously purchased, and as I mentioned earlier, I'm awaiting construction from them on those matters. Rich Cornell, Jack Atkins, and I met at the request of representatives from DEQ to talk about our stormwater erosion and sediment control issues, and we learned that monthly reports that are required to be filed with DEQ had not been done, so Rich caught them up back to 2015. Ms. May has been working on documentation to file with the State Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services for a grant that was obtained in 2016. No documentation has been submitted about that grant, and so she's working to reconstruct that, and once we submit the documentation, we should be able to receive the $20,000 grant reimbursement for expenditures that we have already made. We posted research, prepared an order of procurement for a computer system for Ms. May, iPads for the board members, which are coming, an email system for the county geotechnical services to locate utilities in the courthouse complex, and grant services for courthouse complex renovations. I drafted, reviewed, edited, and submitted minutes for the board to review for your October 12th special meeting, your November 6 regular meeting, your November 8 special meeting to interview candidates, and your November 8 continued meeting. Lauren is still working on the Maricon meeting on October 2nd that went until 1:30 in the morning, so she's still working on that settlement, that's the only one that's outstanding at this point since July 5th. Ms. May is working with DEQ on finding the data to file a recycling report that was due in April and was not done. Ms. May prepared and compiled documents for the fiscal year 16, 17 audits for the auditors, and she processed a claim for damage to the Chevrolet Tahoe for an accident involving a deer. We submitted the cover letter and the resolution that the board passed in November to our congressional delegation regarding the proposed increase in the national park fees. We worked on and completed FOIA requests for Mr. Glenny for the new county administrator's contract and other personnel-related matters, Mr. Conick for a substantial amount of documents related to the trail project, and Mr. Palmer, who is a gentleman from Richmond, for expenditures related to maintenance and upkeep for the war memorial. And I would add to that, that we had to contact Mr. McCarthy because nobody knew anything about where to find any documents because the request was to go back to 2005, and so because he remembered when that monument was updated and cleaned up and repaired, we were able to find those documents, otherwise I don't know how we would have found them. We prepared the ad and the documentation for the proposed amendment to Chapter 43, purchasing, which is on your agenda for later tonight. We did a follow-up on the contract and notification of the applicants and other matters related to the county administrator's service and hiring of Mr. Curry as the new county administrator. I attended the RSD Regional Jail Finance and Personnel Committee, as well as the full authority meeting this past month. We discussed the email migration project with IT consultant David Gallow and executed an agreement for with that project. I attended the VACO conference and emailed the board with information about the programs that I participated in. I processed supplemental appropriations and budget transfers and approved bills for payment this month. I participated in the county buildings task force meeting earlier in November. As I reported earlier, windows were installed by Mr. Jenkins in the visitor's center, and the storage closet back in the jury room requested by the Court of the Circuit Court was completed by Mr. Jenkins, and you might want to take a look at that before, I believe today, because he did a really great job. So that's quick and dirty.
Question?
Yes.
Mr. Conick made his bill, $162.50 for the FOIA information that's taken from the county?
Not to my knowledge, has he, Ms. May?
No, it's not, no.
Do we have a policy where they'll pick this information up until they pay us?
I don't think you can do that, you can, you can require them to pay a deposit if it's over $200, and they have to pay it before you give them the material, but what FOIA, what state code does say, I believe, I'd have to go back and research it, Mr. Lasinski, but I'm fairly positive it says, if you fill a FOIA request for somebody and they don't pay that bill, then the next time they file a FOIA request, you can hold it until they pay the bill for the previous one.
Are there any other?
I believe that's correct.
Are there any other FOIA bills in arrears right now?
Mr. Palmer that we just mailed, the fellow from Richmond, I just finished his, actually I emailed it while I was off, didn't I?
I sent everything to you Friday.
She sent information to me on Friday, I was off on Friday for medical appointment. When I got back home, I got the email, I forwarded it to him and told him how much his bill was, so, and told him to mail it to us, and of course, it's only Monday, so even if he's paid, it wouldn't have gotten. So those two are the only two that I know of. We don't typically, like the other FOIA requests, Mr. Glenny's was not big enough to really have a big bill, some of them are so small that you don't, you don't really incur any significant time. Those two are much, much larger in terms of the research. Mr. Conick's FOIA request required the services of our IT consultant to do, because he had to do the search in the emails, which we don't have the capability to do, so.
Good question. Where are we with the VACO? We had to have that meeting on October 2nd to approve something.
We haven't had, we haven't gotten any notification as to whether or not the county is awarded rank.
But you applied, right?
Right, the board authorized the application.
But I haven't counted this board, I haven't seen what the county is obligated to.
Which obligated to nothing.
The county obligated itself to something with that resolution, now what was the paperwork that was turned in? That's what I'd like to see. That's what I'd like to see.
I can get you a copy of the grant application. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, I'd like to see that because the county has obligated itself to 20%, at least 20% of something, but I have no idea what that is.
Well, the grant has been awarded, so it's right now, it's zero.
I understand that, but I'd like to see what this county asked for because when y'all voted that night, you didn't have anything in front of you to go on, except the resolution stated to pay 20% of something. 20% of what?
The county obligates itself when you accept the grant, so you don't even know yet whether you're awarded the grant. And then when it comes, if you are awarded the grant, you get to decide whether to accept it or not, so there's still another action you have to take.
This board doesn't have to take any more action. It says the county administrator has been authorized to sign everything. I'd like to know what it is you may be signing, or your successor.
I won't be either.
Well, I'd like to know, somebody's got to be signing.
I'll send you the grant application copy.
Thank you. You know, every now and then, I'd like to know what's going on. I don't know why it is that nobody thinks the board supervisors needs to know what's going on. Even the board doesn't seem to want to know.
Okay, another report. Information and correspondence.
You had an agenda item for information, and you had another one called correspondence, so I just lumped them together because they tend to kind of be the same thing. And these are all just presented for your information. There's no action required on any of them, and I don't have any particular extensive knowledge on any of them, other than I can read the same thing that you're reading, so these are just presented for your information.
Well, then we go to what? Reports. Reports, still.
You have a building permit report, in your packet.
Then we have recess, though, so.
And you have a VDA report.
After the VDA report, whatever recess.
You have the VDA report. And I don't think anybody's here for VDA, because I'm not sure. I don't know, the gentleman looks like he's.
He was, he was.
That was REC. So we, the specialty of.
Do we need a motion to recess? Or just recess? I'll make a motion at re-recess.
One second.
Motion made in second. All the way to the side. Aye.
In the administrator's subject to your paying money in the budget for that purpose, the increase from $5,000 to $10,000, this is the language that clarifies that there has to be sufficient funds in the budget to support the purchase. And in your packet also is the purchasing ordinance, chapter 43, with the old numbers stripped down, struck out, and the new proposed numbers can read.
Number to the public. Raise your hand to be recognized, want to be recognized, please stand. Second, district, district, director, comments to the board, and try to literature. Three to five minutes.
Yes. Page 10, Jackson District, poll of new chairs. I like it. Go with it.
Can you repeat that, please?
That's what I'm saying, Phil, I like it.
Anyone else, Lemon? Where is it? Y'all do, isn't it? Anyone else here to speak?
Public comments closed.
Any comments?
Yes, sir. Paragraph four. The new language, that the spending be increased to $10,000 provided that sufficient funds have been budgeted and appropriated by the board of supervisors in an appropriate line item, or transferred by approval of the county administrator in an appropriate line item within the budget, within that budget. That basically gives the county administrator the ability to change the budget that this board approves. And I think that that language should be struck or reworded. You could stop with funds that have been budgeted and appropriated by the board of supervisors in an appropriate line item, period.
Just to be clear, you appropriate by department, so you appropriate a total amount by department, you don't appropriate by line, so it's not changing the board's budget.
Yes, it will. That's what could happen.
The board appropriates, let's say, $100,000 to the county attorney's budget. That total amount wouldn't change, because if you're moving around within the department, it doesn't change the board's appropriation, is my point.
I see what you're saying, that it says funds that have been budgeted and appropriated by the board of supervisors in an appropriate line item. So if we're not careful with that, we could wind up with a bunch of vehicles running around here.
You could buy off for $10,000.
You could buy three for less than that, a piece.
You have a resolution in your packet which you can either adopt or modify or not adopt?
That's my recommendation. I think we don't have that much work that we can't stay involved to that level. I'd say strike the language after, put a period after item, and strike the rest of that. That's a motion.
So, Mr. Frazier, your motion is to approve the resolution, but to strike in B4.
Put a period after item, and strike the rest of that sentence.
So you want to strike the department's sentence that allows the county administrator to move money around?
Right. So that's not going to be cumbersome. Well, see, I don't know why everything has to be related to it's cumbersome. It's accountability. It's the public's money, and I think if this board appropriates money, we have to know that it's being used the other way it's appropriated.
The only example I can think of, and I don't know if this is appropriate or not, excuse me, but we got into this building task force, we had in this some items that we need to advertise for, because they exceeded a certain amount. I think that amount is 500, so I know that's a different example here, but I'm only wondering if that ties the hands of certain administrator, public.
No, we're already taking care of that question up here. We're already taking care of the question. This, all this does is the board would be involved in any expenditures. The upper limit. The numbers be increased to $10,000 provided that sufficient funds have been budgeted and appropriated by the board of supervisors in appropriate line item, period. Part of the problems that we were having a year and a half ago is that money was not in those line items, was being spent on other items, and the monies that we had appropriated didn't get spent the way that we appropriated it. And I think the board needs to stay on top of it for a while. We don't have a handle on anything yet. We just hired a couple of employees, and we act like we can just turn everybody loose again.
Let me give you an example of what that's talking about. One example is that, which I told you I was going to do, like the money in the board's budget under broadband, I was going to move it into a different line item to pay for the email migration, and so within the policy that you currently have, I can do that. I can move it from broadband to whatever line item that would be, which I haven't done yet, but I can do that. That's what this is talking about. Not moving it from, say, board supervisor's budget to sheriff's budget, that's within a department.
Yeah, but it says appropriate line item. We don't know what that means at this point. Somebody could interpret it that differently later on.
It says within that department.
But if it's under $10,000, you can still do it, correct?
This is about the ability to purchase up to $10,000. And I put that language in there specifically to provide a comfort level about.
But this doesn't change the amount of money. It just says that if it's not in that line item, then the board has to approve the change.
I hadn't finished what I was saying, but that's okay. You just go ahead and talk.
Well, for some reason, what I'm saying is being changed. And that's not what I'm, I'm not talking about changing what you wanted, you're referring to, because right now, it says, the language is purchases of more than $5,000 required approval of board supervisors, this limit is unusually low. And you say, I am recommending that the upper limit for purchases can be approved by the purchasing agent, the county administrator, be increased to $10,000 provided that sufficient funds have been budgeted and appropriated by the board of supervisors and appropriate line item, period. So you're taken care of. It's just that the board supervisors would still have some idea that what we approved as a budget is, I mean, you know how much money you could be moving around between meetings? And we, you know, I'm not saying this to you, but whoever the county administrator would be could move tens of thousands of dollars around, and we would have no idea of it until sometime later.
Mr. Frazier, it's suggested language. Y'all do whatever you want to with it.
All right, well, when I make a suggestion, why do you have to always argue with me? I don't like that language. That should be the end of it.
I get it. I get that it's the language. I wasn't arguing with you, I was just trying to explain to you.
I understand what it is, and I don't like it, period. I want to see a period after line item, then strike the rest of the language, and I think the board would still be involved at an appropriate level. It's not cumbersome. You're getting what you want, and the board would still be involved.
Mr. Frazier, with all due respect, I don't want anything with regard to this. This is just, what I was trying to do in proposing this was not make the purchasing ordinance that the county currently has so cumbersome. We've talked about this in our building task force committee. You've heard Mr. Jenkins talk about, you know, what pain.
I think everything is.
These requirements are. So it's up to the board to decide whether you like this language or you want to change it, and it's fine with me, whatever you want to do. I keep messing up the screen, I'm sorry, people. I'm not trying to argue with you, I'm trying to explain what I was trying to accomplish, Mr. Frazier.
I think everything is still accomplished there, it just keeps the board of supervisors involved until we have a good handle on things that things don't happen.
What you're suggesting is, what Mr. Frazier's suggesting is that anything over $5,000, you would still have to come to us to get approval for that?
What he's saying is to change, if I understand it correctly, he's made a motion which doesn't have a second. That this is okay, except that if you have to move money around to get it in the line item, line item, to spend the $10,000, then you have to come to the board. The county administrator can't do that without coming to the board, which again means delay, which is what I was trying to fix. So in other words, if you, if you don't have, like, let's say you have to repair a furnace, and you have $7,000 in the line item. I wouldn't be able to move the $3,000 up and make it 10 and award the contract, because we'd have to come to the board in order to do the transfer.
And so if it comes to us, then we're looking at weeks and weeks before we have a meeting and could vote on it.
It could be up to a month, just because of the, you mean, once a month.
I don't see why we just don't go along with what you suggest here, to facilitate things happening.
The problem is that tens of thousands of dollars could be moved around within the budget, and this would have no logic.
It would be a devious act on somebody's part, which.
Well, we've lived through that. It's not like it hasn't happened before. We bought a truck that was purchased under office space rental, so it's not like it hasn't happened. And the craziest part about that is, we didn't know it for six months, at least I didn't. I missed that meeting. So it's not like it hasn't happened. It has happened. And now, instead of fixing the oversight problem, you're trying to get further away from it. That's the way I see it. Now, if we don't want to do this, why are we here? That's a question that we ought to all ask ourselves, if we don't want to do this right here.
Could you repeat your motion again, Mr. Frazier?
The motion is approval, except put a period after the appropriate line item, it's in bold print, so it'd be a period there, and then strike the rest of that sentence. And we'll see how it's cumbersome.
You want me to period it, because it continues on the purchasing agent's shelf.
No, that's the end of the sentence. Board of supervisors appropriate line item, period.
Right, but then you don't have.
And there's, if you strike the rest of the sentence, that's the end of the sentence.
So if it's not the end of the sentence, it read, it comes to comma, then the sentence continues with the purchasing agent's shelf have authority to award the contract.
That's my point, thank you.
I pulled up the wrong, I had, this is what's wrong with this thing, sometimes it blacks out, and I have to work with what I got.
I have the same problem, limited capacity. I guess motion fails for life at the second.
I will head in the motion, and we approve this, and that's for now.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made in second. Any more discussion? All those debate was second. Roll call. Roll call, though, Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Wazinski.
Aye.
Mr. Glennie.
Aye.
Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
Aye also. One more item.
The second public hearing that you have reporting tonight is on a proposed amended budget for fiscal year 17, 18. At your last meeting, the school superintendent requested supplemental appropriation, or supplemental appropriations, in various line items to the school budget for $563,515.44. And as you know, as we've discussed before, the code of Virginia has a limit on how much total supplemental appropriation you can make to a budget without triggering the need to amend your budget, and that figure triggers it. So the proposed amended budget before the fiscal year 17, 18 includes that additional amount for the schools, and it includes two other amounts that I had explained, but for benefit of the public. The $3,000 request for the Artisan Center of Virginia that was mentioned earlier by the gentleman who presented that earlier in the meeting is included, and there is an increase in the budgeted amounts in the county administration department, because what I did is I calculated out the half a year salary for the new manager, and the benefits that are driven off of that, as well as an estimate for extending my contract to the end of January. That matter is before you labor in the agenda, because you can't do it until you amend the budget, so if you don't do that, you will have a little bit excess appropriation in the county administration department, because the proposed budget includes those figures. I'm sorry I keep messing up my presentation. Keep messing up the display, I'm sorry. So the proposed budget that is required to hold, that's what we're holding public hearing, includes all the transfers and all supplemental appropriations that you've made between the last budget adoption and now, as well as those three additional items. So if it is adopted, then you don't have to do any supplemental appropriations in order to add any of those items.
I guess we can almost go by the same, same language we had before. Anyone wishing or desire to speak, please raise your hand. Once recognized, et tu name and address, let me see comments to the board and try to keep them a great time there. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone caring to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Do you plan on the comment close? Any comments on the board?
Yeah, I think that we should seriously consider not paying the $3,000 for the Artisan Trail. I think we really need to get a handle on how we're spending the money. We just keep sucking down appropriating money. We're burning through a bunch of money, gentlemen.
If this, if this proposed amendment is approved, is written, does that automatically put the $3,000 into the Artisan Center trail?
Um, yes.
Does this package the overall three of these things?
Well, you could take them out. What you can't do is add something in once you've advertised it. You can take something out if you don't approve it. Trying to find something we can actually read.
I'll make a motion that we approve this as presented.
Now, I'll second it. Motion made in second. Once again, roll call.
Yes, sir. Roll call.
Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
Bennet.
Aye.
Mr. Wazinski.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Aye also. Murder. Oh. I could finish on that call, but I'm going to go.
You can listen to the technical.
So, I'll hear you. Other comments, second? Anyone caring to speak, raise your hand. If recognized, please stand, state your name and district.
Karen.
Fine. Other comment open, yes.
You pardon me?
Go ahead. I'll go ahead and buy the card.
Has this fall in that old business?
Can you make sure the mark is...
Okay. I will speak in regard to the small obelisk on the courthouse grounds. It is a memorial to Rappahannock's 115 veterans who were killed in action in war. Some of those old family names were Browning, Burke, Brown, Bowden, Sis, Wharton, Eason, Fletcher, Miller, Moffett, Wayland, Thawhill, Pulling, Harris, Atkins, Bruce, Deal, Butler, Bennett, Dotson, Jenkins, Johnson, and Woodburn. I'm sure their names are all familiar. Their grandfathers had fought with the Culver Committee men in the Battle of Great Bridge and with the First and Second Virginia Regiments throughout the American Revolution. Their grandsons fought with the 29th Infantry, who were the first unit to hit the beaches in Normandy, and many others served in battles in Europe and the Pacific during World War II. The Code of Virginia, Section 15.2-1812 states, end of quote, "It is unlawful for the authorities or any other person or persons to disturb or to interfere with any monuments or memorials so erected. This includes removal of, damaging, or defacing monuments or memorials. I certainly hope and pray that the board of supervisors will act accordingly to the rule of law and to the wishes of the descendants whose names are on the memorial. Thank you."
Anyone else? Anyone else caring to speak? The better public comment close. Any comments, gentlemen?
Well, I'll just say, I don't think any of us have any intention of doing anything with that monument, so we leave it there.
Our next item is old business. Emergency management job description. Do we have one?
At the last board meeting, you all directed Mr. Frazier to revise the ad and the job description, and I got those today. I may have posted one online, so here's the ad, and I have the job description as well.
If I could, gentlemen, it's essentially the same thing that we had in front of us last week, or last month, rather, that Mr. Wazinski had presented to the board. And I don't think that the descriptions or the duty functions are maybe any real work. We met with some people from fire and rescue, and all I did was just reestablish that we had set 30 to $35. Now, that's what I was recommending, and it'd be recommended part-time salary, 30 to $35 an hour. You're asking for somebody with a bachelor's degree, emergency management, or a rated field with three years' experience, and I found out today through an email with Ms. Garten that we're paying somebody an arrangement that was recommended earlier at the landfill. So I think the 16 to 20 is totally out of line, it's too low. And I think the part-time position, 16 to 20 hours a week, is $30 to $35 an hour, based on my best experience, and falls under the amount of money we have budgeted for that. We budgeted 45 for a year, so it'll certainly fall under that. I really, I really think the board needs to go ahead and act on this. It's been six months we've been taking advantage of a volunteer. I have no other way to say it than that.
Well, thank you for doing that.
I didn't do much. Like I said, I didn't really touch the essentials, just met with people and just...and the average salary, full-time salary is like $60,000. And that's going to be a benefit, carrying us with that. So you're talking closer to an $80,000 a year position.
So we can take this and advertise and go on with it?
I think so.
All right, so we'll need a motion for that. You're gonna make a motion?
After that, in form of a motion, yes.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second. I still have concerns that it's going to snowball into many other employees feeling that they're underpaid for the salary they get when we start somebody at this level in a part-time position.
They already show that way.
Well, it's going to add to the fire rate. So I really do have concerns about having a part-time at that level. I'd much rather see it drop to, say, somewhere between 20 and 25.
I don't think you got this on eye with the required skill sets you're advertising for.
We may not, but we can certainly try. Any other discussion? Motion made in second.
Yes, I agree, Mr. Frazier and Mr. Parrish.
No other comments, I'll call a question. All those that they were saying out? All those named?
Nay.
Motion taken. Yes, but not least, fellow member for the county administrator's contract to extend for one month so we can be across between here and the meeting.
As you know, when the board hired me on July 5th, the contract has a termination date of December 31st, and I think I've sent you an email maybe a couple of times saying, we only have two, three things you can do. One is just let it, that contract stand, which means my last day is December 31st. I have suggested a month overlap, which is what this contract does, or you could make it some date in between December 31st to January 31st as you desire. All it requires is me to change a date in this proposed contract extension. What this does is extend my contract with the same terms as you've been, as I've been hired through the end of January.
Mr. Chairman, I think a 30-day overlap or a month overlap is a reasonable period of time. Typically, in the private sector, there would be, for a position of this responsibility and everything involved in it, there would be a lot more overlap. But I think we have a very capable individual coming on board and very capable outgoing interim, so I think 30 days is a good, assurer, is a good handoff. There's one meeting there, they've been working together, get a chance to go through a whole county cycle, if you will, over 30 days. And even though that involves a little more money on the county's part, I think that's, I think that's money well spent, or smart money. And I think 30 days is a reasonable period of time. I'll put that in form of a motion that we adopt this employee contract addendum as presented here.
I'd like to say that when we hired the previous county administrator, I don't feel like that person was properly trained or broken in. And I don't want to make that mistake again, so I'm going to appear on the side of caution and second Mr. Wazinski's motion. She was here for over a year. I stand by what I said. Ms. Garten is here only two weeks with our previous county administrator. I don't see why we would need a month. If our new county administrator, who was just hired, is as good as we hope he is, I don't think we'd need a whole month overlap. If simply we keep hiring people in, we don't have, we don't believe they have the faith of hope to do the job that we hired him to do.
My point on this especially was to go through a whole 30-day business cycle of the county. And with one meeting overlap, that's really not a tremendous amount. But I think it's critical to make sure the handoff is done as best as possible. We want to get a, we want to get a good start here. If we fumble a handoff, we all know what happens.
Right, but we've got a separate zoning administrator, we've got a separate HR person, and they're going to be competing against each other. They're going to be playing on the table.
You talking about the physical space?
The amount of work. I can't imagine that the amount of work is going to take two people to do it for a whole month. They're going to be playing, playing on the table?
Well, I, I've just expressed my opinion and think that the 30 days is a, is a good compromise.
Well, I, I, with Mr. Dennis' presentation earlier, we're hiring on this curve. I agree with that. We're going to have a bunch of work that's going to get done by all these new hires. We're going to have people that don't have anything to do after a little while, and we're doing it now for the next month if we do this. Well, the month of January. I don't think there's that much work to do that we need. I don't know. I mean, I'm pretty sure that there's not that much work to do, but it's going to take both of them a month to do it.
The board meeting that will be Mr. Kirby's first will be on January 3rd, so he would not have been involved in any of the agenda track, and they don't, they don't use board docs where he is. So part of the learning curve would be being able to be involved in the development of the agenda throughout the month to be posted for the February meeting, which he will be at and I will not be at. And Mr. Frazier, quite honestly, you or any of the other board members, I invite you to come into our office any day and sit there all day and just see what happens for a day.
That's all about...
More than one particular...
I know that others seem to do it, but I don't yet.
More than one can do it. No board member has actually done that, Mr. Frazier, since I've been here, at least.
I just said, it seems like it.
Yeah, they have.
Well, I have a question. When is the first February meeting? The day you need to carry it over instead of January 31st, do you say February 5th or whatever the first Monday in February is?
That's already twice the, the, the carryover time that Ms. Garten had this kind of thing.
It's February 5th, I'm offended, that's right.
Yeah, February 5th.
Well, I make the recommendation that the overlap includes up to the 4th anyways, so that everything is, he's worked through everything before he actually, once with Brenda, before he gets here.
And I was just rejoicing today because this is my last, next to last board meeting.
Well, we just had the same...
Oh, oh, oh.
How's that? Well, it's just extended to St. Patrick's Day.
Mr. Chairman, I think you have a motion in a second for what's been presented here.
Yes, I do. I'm just waiting for the discussion to start. So if you want to go through the calls, we do a roll call, roll. Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Wazinski?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And welcome on. Well, that's what we have. May I make the motion to adjourn?
Actually, hang on a second here, Mr. Chairman. I believe we have a board member whose last meeting here is this evening, and whereas I think you may have, you come back a longer date to do something a little more official. I just wanted to extend my thanks and appreciation, mentorship, and all your hard work here on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank all of you. I appreciate your, I'll say, best wishes, and I really enjoy being here. I've learned a lot, well beyond my high school government class, and it's been mostly a pleasure. So, thank you.
Well, we all appreciate you, too.
Thank you. Now, may I make that motion? To adjourn? So, a character.
Second.
Second, who needs...